Good evening. If anyone is here to speak at public comment and you did not register online or come forward yet, this is your last chance to get registered. Please come. Thanks.
On September the eighth to order. And at this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence if you would. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Councilmember Kearns?
Here.
Councilmember Mosley?
Here.
Councilmember Motney?
Here.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Here.
Councilmember Strazza?
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Mayor Brady?
Here. Thank you. As we have a quorum, we'll then proceed forward. And at this point in time, we'd like to have recognition of appointments. And I'd like to ask to come forward to the microphone, our Chief, Chief Matheny from the Bloomington Fire Department, who is going to acknowledge some new firefighters. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and members of the community. Tonight, we're here to celebrate some significant milestones in the Bloomington Fire Department. We've got seven individuals that have recently completed their probationary year as all, as well as two people that are being promoted to captain. We're proud to introduce the newly promoted, or sorry, the newly members off probation first, and they'll come by and get a certificate from the mayor. Over the past year, they've proven themselves with their dedication, their commitment to this community, and we're proud to have them into our ranks as full-time firefighters. First of all, I'd like to introduce you to Robert Bernard from Philo, Illinois.
And if the council members see fit, please stand and congratulate our firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
We have Holden Lewick from Bloomington. Dalton Hogan, also from Bloomington.
Thank you.
We have Jake Cheeseman from Danvers.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Holden Snyder, also from Bloomington.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Ben Schuler from Pontiac, Illinois. And also Ian Wisher from Washington. So in addition to these people that just completed their probationary year, I want to introduce two other individuals that were just promoted to captain with some recent retirements. I have Josh Wheeler with 20 years of experience. And I have Captain Clayton Matson with 18 years of experience. So these promotions not only demonstrate the experience and leadership, but also their dedication to the community over many, many years. So on behalf of the department, we'd like to thank you and the community for continued support. Thank you. And we're going to be stepping out now because we're doing a penning ceremony at the memorial. So thank you, everyone.
Understandable. Thank you very much. Congratulations to all. Next, we're going to move on to the recognition of the National Emblem Club proclamation. And at this time, I believe Mrs. Fowler might be with the Emblem Club, if she's still here, or others are welcome to come to the podium and receive your proclamation here in a minute. Whereas the members of the Bloomington Emblem Club, number 432 of the Supreme Emblem Club of the United States of America, in proclamation, community service are actively engaged in seeking out the worthy and the worthy and the needy in our community. And their assistance and guidance provided to young men and women is evidenced by their scholarships, assuring the women and education of the deserving in our community. Those needs of seniors, physical and mentally challenged, those hospitalized veterans and those with needs are considered and fulfilled insofar as can be. The members are vitally concerned with the immediate and permanent needs of those placed in stress by reason of floods, tornadoes, and other disasters of nature. The members are dedicated to the principles of endeavors and charity and justice for all, be it resolved by the deeds of these dedicated charitable members of the Bloomington Emblem Club, number 432 of the Supreme Emblem Club of the United States of America, be recognized. Furthermore, resolved as the mayor of the city of Bloomington, I do hereby proclaim this week of September 13th through September 20th as the National Emblem Club Week. Congratulations. Mrs. Fowler, do you have a comment or two?
I'd just like to thank you on behalf of our emblem club. We were established in 1967 here in Bloomington, and we promote truth, justice, and loyalty. So, thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the proclamation recognizing welcoming week as has been requested by council and members. These, this September, the city of Bloomington community, the city of Bloomington's community will come together to find common ground with our neighbors, seek similarities within our different cultures and perspectives, and depend on our commitments to building a stronger and more resilient city of Bloomington. We are much stronger when we embrace our similarities and differences. And the members of our community will do just that by sharing food, music, art, conversation, and more throughout this week. While this week provides an opportunity to pause, reflect, and plan for the next phase of welcoming work in the city of Bloomington, our community prioritizes a spirit of welcoming year round. Welcoming is a core part of who we are and who we have always been in the city of Bloomington. We will continue to choose connection, courage, and love over division, fear, and hate. Now, therefore, I, Dan Brady, mayor of the city of Bloomington, by virtue of the authority invested in me by the constitution and the laws of the city of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim the week of September 12th through the 21st, 2025, as a welcoming week. And I call upon the people of the city of Bloomington to join together to build a stronger community across the city of Bloomington. And I believe that Mr. Michael Hurt will come forward, I believe, to receive the proclamation. And if you have some remarks.
I'll get my remarks out of the way first. Is that's all right? Ladies and gentlemen, I am Michael Hurt. I am the, excuse me, Employee Engagement, Inclusion, and Compliance Officer, and I'm also the staff liaison to the Welcome America Commission. I want you to join me in welcoming some of our newly mentored citizens this evening. We have three of them here. They've gone through all the classes and passed all the tests and expressed a desire to not only become citizens of this country, but to reside here in Bloomington. Just give them my hand. We're going to give them each about two minutes. I want you to hear from them, hear their stories. We'll call them up in order. Listen for your name, please. Blanca Acevedo, Javier Lopez, Jonathan Cakesa, and Isaac Kabuya.
Please come forward to the podium.
We didn't have them standing. We can get a picture. So if we weren't able to do it, we tried.
Hi, everyone. My name is Blanca Acevedo. And I became citizen in this beautiful country recently. A journey that started probably 20 years back. I'm sorry, I get emotional with this. So since I came here in 2002, my goal was to feel welcome, to belong to this country. And when I had the opportunity to become a citizen, well, first a resident in this country, and then a citizen, it was like a dream come true. It was not an easy path. It was like a road when I had an ups and downs. But I can say that in this city, I have always felt welcome. And now that I have the opportunity to meet you, it's like a blessing from heaven. When I got the invitation, I said, you are really making us feel so special. And I hope everybody who is in this city could feel that way. Because with everything that is going on around us, it is easy to not feel welcome. But thank you for doing this.
Thank you very much. Thank you and welcome. And next speaker, and if you want to all wait for just a minute, we'll have you come by and greet the council if you would. Okay? Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, everyone. My name is Isaac Kabuya. I, well, I don't know what to say. I'm out of words. But for a little story, I got in the United States back in 2018 as a permanent resident. And then, yeah, the immigration budget helped me a little bit to complete my, my steps for the citizenship. And then, yeah, finally got it. And I always feel so welcome in Bloomington. So I'm starting my family here. And I am planning to live here for a little while. Yeah, I just welcomed my, my baby last year. So I want to say, yeah, I want to say I will be here for a little while, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Next?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Javier Coronel Lopez.
Good afternoon. My name is Javier Coronel Lopez.
Yo llegué a esta comunidad en el 2003 con mi familia.
I came to this community in 2003 with my family.
My wife and tengo dos niñas, dos hijas.
My wife and I have two daughters.
No, no hablo muy bien inglés. Siento un poco de pena, pero he tratado por 17 años. He estado trabajando en un restaurante y he convivido con gente hispana. Entonces, me es difícil el inglés.
I don't speak English very well yet. It makes me a little bit embarrassed. But I have worked for 17 years in this community in a restaurant, mostly with other people who speak Spanish.
Quiero agradecer. Yo llegué a esta comunidad y quiero agradecer a toda la gente porque la puerta que yo he tocado siempre me han abierto la puerta, me han ayudado.
I came to this community, and I really want to thank the people of this community because since I arrived, every door I've knocked on, they have welcomed me and helped me.
Me siento muy a gusto de estar en esta comunidad porque es muy segura y mi familia está segura aquí.
I feel happy to be in this family because, I feel happy to be in this community because I feel safe and my family feels safe being here.
Ahora ya no trabajo en un restaurante. Ahora manejo un autobús escolar.
I'm no longer working in a restaurant. Now I drive a school bus.
Quiero como corresponder en algo, ayudando a mi comunidad por todo lo que me han ayudado.
I like this job because I feel like I'm helping my community in return for everything they have helped me with.
Y quiero agradecer a Immigration Project porque también gracias a que ellos me han ayudado ahora soy ciudadano americano y estoy muy orgulloso.
I also want to thank Immigration Project for helping me to become an American citizen. I'm very proud to be an American citizen.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if they, guys, if you'd like to come up here, get them?
Yeah.
If you'd like to come by the council so we could all welcome you and say thank you. Now we'll move on to public comment. If there's public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have speakers tonight that wish to speak?
We do.
Okay.
I'll start with reading the list of emailed public comment that we received that was provided to council earlier today. That would be from Paula Helgason, Michael Hens, Jim Stangle, Don Bitterman, John Solberg, and Lavender Lane. And I just wanted to point out for the record that Lavender Lane's email was actually received on 8/25, but it was trapped in our junk filter. So I got it today and just making note of it. But it has been provided to council.
And those emails will be shared with council?
Yes, they already have.
They haven't already. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It's also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. Each speaker will be given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker engaging in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time will be ceased. The first speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we will start with Lorene Phipps, and then to follow Diane Benjamin.
Good evening. My name is Lorene Phipps, and my husband Brian and I have been homeowners in Bloomington for 35 years. We have resided in the same home in Old Farm Lakes for 25 of those years. We selected that subdivision because of the feeling that we got when we were driving through it for the first time, and we still get that feeling today. We also selected it for the covenants that the homeowners association provides, and also the safeties that the city had provided up until now. We are strongly opposed to the resolution to adopt the missing middle housing scan analysis presented by Optico's Design to the council on May 27. The agenda packet from that meeting states the resolution has a goal of strong neighborhoods with the objective to preserve property, home valuations, and improve neighborhood infrastructure. After reading the report, it is clear the resolution has a negative citywide impact and would result in the direct opposite of those goals and objectives for many of our neighborhoods. Neighborhoods like Old Farm Lakes do not have the infrastructure to support multifamily dwellings allowed by this report. Infrastructure such as water, electricity, plumbing, parking, and public transportation. Furthermore, homeowners in Old Farm Lakes and possibly other neighborhoods will certainly see a reduction in their home valuations when investors begin to buy up our properties and convert or construct multifamily dwellings. The Optico study says they analyzed walkable centers within the city with the objective to identify areas suitable for MMH. Old Farm Lakes in Zone R2 isn't walkable to downtown. It isn't walkable to existing centers of activity. The resolution also moves to permits by rights, which means that neighbors would not be notified if changes were being made to properties. On a related topic, Old Farm Lakes is 100% single-family residences and has been for many years. It really should be rezoned to an R1 district, as a side note. While I support the idea that the city needs to address current and future housing needs, this resolution is not the answer, and it will hurt many more than it will help. Surely, there must be something to meet in the middle on. This resolution is not it. I implore the mayor, council members, and city manager to vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next up, we'll have Diane Benjamin.
Good evening, council. Nice to be here with you. I'd rather be at home on my couch watching you, but that's okay. Anyway, I had to come because I have to read you some excerpts from two Bloomington police reports. The first one says, someone, let me see which one I want to start with. I think I'll start with this one. "They were called to a house because the backside of their fence had been defaced with four large numbers, 8647." If you don't know what that means, it's a hate crime. It's a large fence with large numbers on it. They didn't just spray paint the numbers on, they bleached it onto the wood. That's an actual hate crime, people. It's calling for the assassination of the President of the United States. The second police report is to the same residence. Somebody threw glass ornaments filled with red powder over their fence, and they happen to have a pool in their backyard, so the ornaments broke open when they hit the pool deck. Of course, there's, nobody saw it happen. The homeowner has cameras, but they don't pick up stuff on the other side of the fence. Anyway, this is still visible today, the 8647, because how do you fix a fence that's been bleached? Obviously, hate is alive in Bloomington. For all you people who wanted a pledge signed, are you going to stand up for these people? The Nazi flyers were never going to work. There was never going to be a march from Miller Park to downtown. This Nazi stuff has been happening since at least 2012, when I got a letter in the mail from the Nazi party. It comes up every couple of years just to get people riled up. Meanwhile, this is actual hate directed at a house just because they have a Trump flag and Trump signs. If not in our town cared, they would be assisting the homeowner or at least stating publicly they are all against hate speech, not just speech they choose to hate. In the words of a not in our town board member who happens to be sitting on this council, silence is violence. About 15 minutes ago, I posted the pictures and the police reports on my website, which is blnnnews.com. If anybody wants to see them, they can go see them. On a good note, thank you for finishing GE Road. It's fantastic.
Next, please. Thank you. Next, please.
Next up, we'll have Patty Killian, and then to follow V. Spikes.
Good evening. My name is Patty Killian. I'm a 12-year resident and homeowner in Old Farm Lakes. I too want to talk about the Optico's report, which has a lot of us concerned in our neighborhood. My comments, I found the report to be pretty much a canned, generic approach to address the middle, the MMA issue. While there were some pictures of some, you know, some multiple, multiple family dwellings in our town, I didn't see any detailed market analysis, analysis specific to our city. Many of the solutions could work in any town USA and are being implemented in cities and suburbs across the country. I urge all of you to realize that a one-size-fits-all approach does not work. We should know that from other things. We should know that from other things that we've seen implemented across our country. As addressed by my former, or by the former speaker, Old Farm Lakes is currently classified as R2, something none of us understand, since all three hundred and seventy-five homes are single-family and always have been since the subdivision was founded in the nineteen eighties. That's an issue we need to begin addressing, separate from this. So instead of adopting this approach as a canned solution for every community in Bloomington, every neighborhood, I urge you to all do more work to let's do what makes sense because the solutions identified in that Optico's report would be detrimental to Old Farm Lakes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next up, we'll have V. Spikes, and then to follow, Mark Bitterman.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm honored to be here today, and I want to let you all know that I don't want to waste your time, and I'm going to be very brief. Because as my profession, my name is V. Spikes, first and foremost. I spent many years with the military and with the federal government. As a military real estate profession, specializing in real estate and subject matter expert in real estate. I was not planning on coming to speak, but the information, you know, came to my door by Stephanie, which is the president of Old Farm Lakes. And when she, you know, when the information came to my wife, she told me, says, "V., you know, read this." So I did. And when I read it, I said, "Oh, gee." I didn't want to get involved, but nevertheless, as a former military member of the headquarters of the Air Force and Department of Defense and federal government, United States Postal Service, real estate subject matter expert and real estate specialist, I'm a resident of Old Farm Lakes neighborhood, and I appeal to exercise my public comment rights under the Open Meeting Act 5ILCS 120/2.06G, and urge council members to move to continue a table to vote on the Bloomington council procedure to allow the city and neighborhood lawful time to secure additional studies, investigation, and review the environmental travel, I mean, traffic and infrastructure analysis and the impact on the citizens before a final decision. So I vote on optical and the city plan. I vote no on optical and the city plan for Old Farm Lakes plan. Very short, and you have plenty of time. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next?
Next up, we'll have Mark Bitterman, and then to follow, Judy Fiesek.
I also want to thank you for your time. I also live in Old Farm Lakes, and this is also has to do with the Optico report that came out. You're going to hear from a lot of us in our subdivision because I do don't believe that all of your constituents know about this and what's going on. Fortunately, we found out about it. I'm mainly concerned about property values because a lot of the plans in there, you think about your own house. You can put these ADUs in your backyard. You could have multi-home right next door to you, who the owner's not going to live there. So who's going to take care of that property? Are they going to keep it up? Are they going to maintain it? The other thing that I'm concerned about is where are these people going to park their cars? We have three hundred and seventy-five homes in Old Farm Lakes. Think about this. If only ten percent get converted to a multi-home of four units or three units, you're going to add a hundred and forty cars to your neighborhood with no parking. Where are they going to park? On the street. All right? What's that going to do? Well, first, you can't block mailboxes. What's that going to do with garbage collection? What's that going to do with snowplow removal? Where are you going to put the snow? There's not going to be any place. You're not going to be able to tell these people they can't park there because there's nowhere else to park. So you're going to run into that kind of situation. We get brush pickup. You're not going to be able to get a front-end loader down that street. You're not going to be able to get a bus down that, our roads curve. You've got cars on both sides of the street. You're not going to be able to get buses down there. And what happens if you encounter a car coming towards you? Who's going to back up? Who's going to make the room to be able to maneuver around? It's just, it would be a nightmare. It would be just a nightmare for everybody. The other thing, too, is you're going to hear from a lot of people. Our infrastructure is just not there. We lose water pressure Monday through Fridays when people are just getting ready for work. You add in a bunch of multi-unit homes, your water pressure is going to go down to next to nothing. So, I mean, there's going to have to be infrastructure change. There's going to be huge costs here involved with this, if this happens to go through. Now, it might work in some parts of the city, but in Old Farm Lakes and in most of the subdivisions that are R2 or are just single-family homes, this is going to turn out to be a complete nightmare for everybody. And there's going to be a lot of lawsuits because we have covenants, and when you do this permit rights thing, people are going to start building. And now you're going to have lawsuits. Now you're talking litigation for the covenant owners, increased money, and you're also going to have city costs. I mean, this doesn't make sense at this point. It needs to be reevaluated and needs to be rethought through. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next up is Judy Fiesek, and then to follow, Noah Tang. Judy Fiesek and then Noah Tang.
Noah, if you want to stand up and stand behind here so you're at the podium, we can keep moving along. That'd be great if you're here. Thank you. Go right ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Judy Fiesek, and I've lived in Old Farm Road for thirty-five years. Optics' proposal recommends zoning changes across several districts, including R2 neighborhoods like mine. While technically zoned R2, Old Farm Lakes and many nearby neighborhoods are, in reality, single-family homes, functionally R1. The city's stated goals are important, addressing a projected housing shortage and increasing housing diversity, especially for seniors, students, and young professionals. I support these goals. However, I'm concerned this proposal applies blanket zoning changes, including increased density and by right development without accounting for infrastructure needs or neighborhood realities. Old Farm Lakes is not walkable. It's more than a mile and a half to the nearest grocery store and over two miles to a hospital or daycare. If multifamily housing is added in neighborhoods like mine, sufferable problems follow. More housing means higher population density. In non-walkable areas, that means more cars. More cars means more on-street parking, especially since the proposed zoning changes will not require multifamily housing to provide off-street parking solutions. That affects snow removal, school buses, emergency access, and pedestrian safety. It also puts strain on water and sewer systems, and more buildings mean more non-permeable surfaces, increasing flood risk when times of heavy rain. The plan also allows permits by right, removing public input on neighborhood development. Residents would lose their ability to voice concerns. That doesn't build community. It erodes it. I'm not against change. I'm not against increasing housing options, but this proposal doesn't match the realities of neighborhoods like mine. It lacks infrastructure planning needed to support the increased density that it allows. We need a more thoughtful, targeted approach, and one that places new housing types in appropriate areas and ensures infrastructure keeps pace with growth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Noah? And who's speaking after Noah?
After Noah will be Lisa Clover.
Okay, and if you're able to move to the microphone now, that would be great. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Noah Tang, and I'm the president of Strong Towns Blono, where we advocate for a more incremental approach to urban planning. I am here as a resident and homeowner of central Bloomington to urge the council to pass items 8B, 8C, and 8D on the regular agenda tonight. However, I will be spending my comment time solely talking about the item 8D as I have previously reached out for comment about the other two items. You should vote to approve item 8D, a resolution directing staff to review zoning code for alignment with future housing needs in targeted areas through overlay district for missing middle housing in walkable neighborhoods. I know there are a lot of people who have disparaged the Optico's report based on broad claims, not based on the text, so I have brought a printed copy of the report to come through. Some people are up in arms about the idea of attainable housing might happen in their neighborhood. As an aside, let me remind you that the people who directly benefit from new housing in our community might not be even here to voice their opinions. If they just looked at the maps published on fifty-six and fifty-seven on those pages, that'll be enough to scare people. However, look closer at the words prospective center and transformable mixed use. These words are entirely hypothetical to the study, and you look closer at the actual important part, the last page, section four point six, next step towards implementation. The authors recommend to continue with a deep dive in a more detailed study and cost analysis to further specify future areas for this missing middle development, which includes, and I quote, "Hear and address concerns. Assess what missing middle housing types are contextually appropriate and empower community members to voice their interest in public meetings." Also, more importantly, council members need to look at the actual text of the proposed ordinance. Sections two and three state support for the report's preliminary recommendation that if missing middle housing is to move forward, the staff should begin with a small-scale incremental approach to implementation, focusing on preservation in regeneration areas, hint, hint, not Old Farm Lakes, as defined in the city comprehensive plan. This also directs staff to further evaluate the preliminary recommendations of the report and return with formal proposals for consideration. Prior to initiating any text amendments, these proposals should focus on the creation of an overlay zoning district that may be applied to certain areas of the community. After further research and council approval, rather than applying this type of housing citywide across entire zoning districts. This is a solid proposal, and all it does is direct staff to look and investigate further instead of blanket approvals for apartments everywhere. I urge the council to pass items 8B, C, and D tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next up, we'll have Lisa Clover, and then to follow will be Marlon Callahan.
And our next speaker, if able, you can come up to the podium as well. Go ahead, please.
My name is Lisa Clover, and I've lived in Old Farm Lakes for twenty years. I won't repeat all the concerns that were brought up before, and I'm not opposed to zoning changes or new development in order to meet the needs of our growing community. I think our concern was how different things might be applied to different communities, including ours. We already have seen several investors who are interested in our properties and buying our homes, and we're just concerned about new zoning changes or rules that might leave neighborhoods like ours vulnerable to speculative development by investors or landlords who may prioritize profits over long-term neighborhood health. I just wish that the council would carefully consider our concerns so that any zoning changes balance the goals of growth and the realities and the needs of our existing neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Marlon Callahan, and then to follow will be Mark Adams.
Good evening, council. My name is Marlon Callahan. I'm a resident of Old Farm Lakes, and I'm filling a little bit under the weather, so please bear with me. We'll be brief. I just wanted to voice my concern with this proposal for the missing middle housing. I am for solutions for housing. I just want to be able to voice my opinion to state that we really need more of a focused viewpoint on this proposal and the citywide implementation of MMH. We do not have a walkable area in the Old Farm Lakes area, so it is not suitable for a citywide blanket solution. So I just wanted to voice my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mark Adams, and then to follow will be Gabriel Sharid.
Hello, my name is Mark Adams. I live Ward Eight here in Bloomington, Hershey Grove subdivision. I'm here tonight to show my support for the city's proposed zoning text amendment as listed under the agenda items 8B as in boy through 8D as in dog to the zoning code of the city of Bloomington referring to the allowed uses of tables, bulks, bulk in-site standards, transitional yards, use provisions, and administrative procedures. I will first point out that all five standards were approved unanimously by the Bloomington Planning Commission with a total roll call of nine zero zero on June tenth, twenty twenty-five. This appointed body fully agreed that the updates to the zoning text amendments would allow for more flexible and responsive changes to our city's zoning codes as well to our ongoing housing crisis. Not only does the proposed comply with the city of Bloomington's comprehensive plan, but it also promotes the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the public by laying the work down for more housing development and addressing our housing shortage. I encourage all council members to support these zoning text amendments as presented. Vote yes and say yes to my backyard.
Thank you. Next?
All right, next up, we have Gabriel Sharid, and then to follow will be Ian Campbell.
Was that not working? Oh, no. All right. Hopefully, most of it was heard. Obviously, you know, like a lot of other people had already stated, I am concerned about the property values, that it will hurt property values. I like that our neighborhood is family-centered and that we know our neighbors. Renters aren't invested in their neighborhood. They sign a lease, they're there for a year or two, and then they move. If they don't like it, they move. If they get a new job, they move. They're not buying the house with a twenty, thirty-year loan where they're going to stick around. Just to be clear, we don't, we don't want this change for our neighborhood. Like many of us in Old Farm Lakes, I would like to change our zoning to R1, not part of today's meeting, but it seems that it's appropriate for how we actually use that neighborhood. It is only single-family, and it has always been, and I would like it to remain that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ian Campbell, and then to follow will be Tracy Patkounas.
Good evening. My name is Ann Campbell, and I, along with a lot of other people, live in Old Farm Lakes and have lived here for eighteen years. I'm not going to go into what everyone else has been talking about, but I, and I do realize we do have a housing shortage. However, I would like for you to reconsider in considering Old Farm Lakes as part of this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next up, we have Tracy, and then to follow will be Bob Michael.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members and city staff. My name is Tracy Patkounas. I am the president of the Mid Illinois Realtors Association, and on behalf of our almost five hundred members who advocate on behalf of private property owners, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight on regular agenda items B, C, and D pertaining to the zoning text amendments and the future of the Optico's report. Simply put, we need more housing. Currently, there are about a hun, I checked today, about a hundred active residential listings in Bloomington. Eighty-five single-family, and that's from under a hundred thousand to over five hundred thousand, and fifteen condos or townhomes. Less than ten of those are priced between a hundred and twenty-five thousand and a hundred and seventy-five thousand, which we're talking kind of are affordable. In a healthy market for Bloomington Normal Combined, we would be around four hundred to seven hundred active listings. We need more housing and at all price points. In order to increase the housing supply, we need policies that are fair, pro-growth, and promote a housing market that works for everyone. We appreciate the city's focus and priority you've given housing, your resolution that you passed almost a year ago, setting forth some priorities, to the standardized housing incentives ordinance that was passed last April. Regarding the agenda item on the Optico's report, as well as the zoning text amendments related to ADUs and mixed use, it is our hope that you will support the draft ordinances and continue, we're just continuing the important conversation about housing for Bloomington. we're just continuing, the important conversation about housing for Bloomington. ADUs can be an easy option because of their size and affordability, and we encourage Bloomington to continue to allow ADUs even while enacting reasonable restrictions to ensure safety. Also, please continue just to explore what missing middle housing means and looks like for Bloomington. Missing middle typically refers to starter homes as well as some smaller multifamily units, like duplexes, all of which considered affordable by those earning between eighty to a hundred twenty percent of the area median income. Reasonable policies can preserve the zoning classes while opening up some land, some land use restrictions to allow for more housing types. Allow, allowing for mixed housing types on larger lots provides for moderate increases in neighborhood densities, the kinds that do not displace current residents and do not redefine the characteristics of neighborhoods. More housing supply quite simply means more housing stability. The American dream of home ownership is for everyone and should be the primary public policy to bring economic growth and stability to Bloomington families. Mira strongly encourages the council to explore, to continue to explore ways to address the housing supply and affordability. And I know you're not doing this just jumping in. You are still exploring. At a time when homeownership increasingly feels out of reach, your efforts can provide meaningful solutions to restore opportunity through those who want to come Bloomington home.
Thank you.
Next up will be Bob, and after, after Bob, we will have, we will have reached our thirty-minute time. So if you'd like to do something about that, you can.
One of the members want to, thank you. One of the members want to make a motion for extended time.
How many speakers do we have?
You still have twelve.
Whatever three times twelve is. I moved at least.
That sounds great.
Thirty-six.
A second?
I'll second.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you. Seconded by Member Motney.
I'll call it quick. Councilmember Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Straza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Too many makes on.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
Go ahead, please.
Hello.
Go ahead. Yep, it'll be Bob, and then Julia Sutherland to follow. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Rob Michael. I'm here to, in opposition to mass zoning changes associated with the Opticos design report being applied universally within the city of Bloomington with no regard to impacts on existing neighborhoods. Like many others, I live in Old Farm Lakes. The zoning concerns, along with some of the items in the report, are of concern to us and to me specifically. In reviewing the firm's report, it is clear that Old Farm Lakes is not a priority for addressing missing middle housing. The neighborhood doesn't meet the definition of walkable. The neighborhood has a number of other items that would keep it from being a priority. However, applying the zoning blanket across the entire city does negatively impact the community. I've decided to leave out a bunch of items here. Thank you, everyone else. But I do believe, from what I've seen, that this consulting agreement was entered into related to affordable housing and available housing. I also have zero confidence that investors already positioning to profit from these changes share the same goals as the city of Bloomington or the residents. So based off of this, I once again want to state that I oppose moving forward with the blanket zoning changes associated with this effort. It is my hope it will be voted down, and affordable housing much needed in the community will be researched more thoroughly for the unique community needs within our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next up is Julia, and then to follow will be Andrew Franson.
Good evening, council. I'm Julia Sutherland. It is very lovely to see you again. I'm rather enjoying these meetings, so I think I'm going to keep coming to them. It's fun being with you. I would like to exhort you to pass and support the regular agenda items eight B, C, and D. I have three points I'd like to make for you this evening. Number one, I am actively pursuing a project. It's a lifelong promise to my mother, as I've probably told you all before, to give her a place to live that is close to me and is a safe place for her to live. And the lifelong promise was that I would not put her in a home. I, I feel like part of the reason I moved into my neighborhood, Demet's Grove, was there was an opportunity to expand my living accommodations to accommodate her as well. An ADU will provide that kind of home to my mother simply because she won't have to try to haul herself up three-step flights of stairs in an old Victorian home. She will have a single entry into her home. It will provide her privacy and dignity. She's eighty-six years old, so we're designing this for her safety and for her pleasure. Eight B will allow me to do that for my mother, so I thank you in advance. I know that a video was sent to many of you outlining the project that I have. I hope you all have a chance to look at it. And for the public here tonight, I encourage you to look at Strongtown, towns, B L O N O dot com. If you'd like to see a short presentation of what an ADU should be and can be. I want to make point number two pretty quickly. ADUs, you know what? They're as old as the horse and buggy and as old as Bloomington themselves. How many of our distinctive neighborhoods have carriage houses? How many of them are, that's part of the charm of those distinctive neighborhoods? And I think that what we're doing is revisiting for these future times options for housing that existed in the past and can exist again. The third sit, point I would like to make is really for you on the point of eight D and for other neighborhoods, people who live in neighborhoods other than the one I live in. Recognizing that every neighborhood is different, and people collect themselves in neighborhoods for reasons, that there should be flexibility in our housing codes. I live in an R-two neighborhood as well. It's an older neighborhood. One of the reasons I moved into it, and I will stop here because I know my time is done, but I want to thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Next?
Next up is Andrew Franson, and then to follow will be Zach Carlson.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Franson. I'm a student at Illinois State University and also a student political organizer. I kind of want to echo what Noah Tang had to say, but I think one of the most important voices is being left out of this conversation, and that's the voice of students. Students, there are a lot of them in Bloomington and Normal. I might be a resident of Normal, but at the same time, I know I want to stay in Bloomington-Normal. I've never felt, I've never felt that I've found a community where, you know, I feel as welcomed and as accepted as I found at Illinois State and as in Bloomington-Normal. On the other hand, I find it incredibly concerning that the city of Bloomington is willing to spend millions and millions of dollars of integrating AI with policing. And also, the fact that, you know, you're willing to charge people, I don't know, like four, it's like a hundred dollars for four megabytes of data through FOIA requests, that's disgusting. I'm going to make it clear, that is disgusting. It's incredibly disgusting. People, citizens, are just as much, you know, policing and, you know, we have to be able to access this footage. We have to be able to access this needed information. A democracy functions when all of us are able to partake in it and not just city council. We have to work together here. And unfortunately, if you charge one hundred dollars for four megabytes of data, that's, that's not cooperation. That just gives structures of inequality the opportunity to induce more inequality. On a final note, I was at the counter protest when there was a supposed Nazi rally. And as much as I, you know, applaud the city council of Bloomington for signing a anti-hate pledge, I don't think that's enough. If this is a recurring theme, something that, you know, comes back every, you know, two years, three years, four years, maybe we start needing to having questions about why that is a thing. In my hometown, it's not. I don't know Nazi flyers in my hometown that just pop up. Why is that an issue here? Why is that a question or a conversation that we need to be having? As glad as I am that, you know, Nazis did not show up, I'm disgusted and ashamed that that was even a remote possibility that we had to have a conversation about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next up is Zach, and then to follow will be Bill Bishop.
Hello, everyone. My name is Zach Carlson. I'm also the people's city manager for the city of Bloomington. Nice to meet you all once again. I'll get my normal lightness out of the way. There are still no old-style The Bison Games. I'm waiting for old-style The Bison Games. I choose the old-style The Basketball Games in the eighties. I think we can do it in twenty twenty-five. Now, on to the important matters of the day. As others have said, some others have said, I support items eight B through D. The housing studies and the increases of, or the all-in-one ADUs and other changes to, not even changes to code, to study the changes of potential code. Right? And I want to clarify again, these are studies. City staff, professionals will look at these and suggest what best courses to change. I live in Ward Six. I live near Miller Park. An overlay for more density for multifamily housing would be wonderful in my neighborhood. There's a new grocery store, new corner store that's opened up south of Chicago. They have actual fresh fruit, actual fresh vegetables. I know it's a big concern on the West Side for a long time, right? Not a lot, admittedly, but some. It's there, right? They need that extra density to survive. This small business who's trying to provide a needed resource to the area needs the added density to survive, right? And mind you, there's already mixed-use housing in my neighborhood, right? Down my block even. Doesn't change the character, doesn't mess with the plowing or the chain, or debris removal or what have you. There's this very nice suburb just north of Milwaukee that I used to, I spent a lot of time in named Shorewood. Similarly, lots of winding streets, but almost exclusively duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes. It really has beer garden on the, on the river, and a bike trail right next to it. It's called Hubbard Park. I suggest anyone who goes to Milwaukee, give it a try. It doesn't change the character. It was nice. It's polite. It's pristine, even Americana to a point, right? So these are the things that we can have with the potential changes, with these studies. So I urge you all to pass B through D. On the other hand, I would like you to shoot down A, the new, the new twelve-year contract with, I believe it was Axios for the new cameras and drones and this and that and the other. Not only is, does this, is a waste and duplicate and wasted work of what the county and Normal and I, she already does, it's a twelve-year contract for tech? Do we, do we remember twenty thirteen? Do we remember Windows XP? Things change a lot in those years, and we still have the contract with Flock. What happens with that, since it's apparently incompatible? Last thing, my last ten seconds, the consent agenda, I believe it was H for charging for commercial FOIA requests, that needs to be shot down, pulled, shot down, and revisited. I'm not paying twenty dollars, even if it's commercial, for a picture from the quality of two thousand and nine. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next up is Bill Bishop, and then to follow will be Alex Gray.
Hi, I'm Bill Bishop, and I'm with, in Ward Three, and I represent Harvest Point subdivision. I've lived here about sixty out of the sixty-seven years that I've been on this earth and moved here when I was age two. At least, that's what my parents told me. I'd like to comment on the Opticos MMH scan. Basically, the recommendation is a huge change for relatively medium-sized city, and I would suggest less is more. I would also like to see ideas generated with metrics and measures of success. The last thing I want to see is a mass change to Bloomington zoning, which would further enable Wall Street and local real estate investors to create more predatory rental units in Bloomington. My family moved here in nineteen sixty-one from Wichita, Kansas. My father hired, was hired as an ISNU professor of English, and there's a similar MMH issue at that time. And my dad and my parents and their colleagues had a hard time finding housing units at that point in time. In nineteen fifty-five, GE was expanding their manufacturing, they're building refrigerators. By nineteen sixty, nineteen sixty, if you remember, they moved country companies from Chicago to the location where it's at, in Towanda Avenue. That's a huge influx of people. State Farm was expanding at that time. ISNU was, had about forty-five hundred students in nineteen sixty, and it went all the way up to fifteen thousand students in nineteen seventy. There was a mass number of professors that were seeking homes at that time. So there are very few options. But until National Homes created a subdivision in North Normal bordered by School Street, Rab Road, and Main Street, these were cookie-cutter homes, not custom builds, and they were semi-prefabricated homes that were affordable and allowed my father and other low-paid instructors to buy homes for our family of four. The problem is that even the Regional Housing Recovery Plan, which is dated, I think, March of twenty twenty-four, at least adopted at that point in time, you are asking custom home builders about building affordable homes. These are custom home builders. Affordable, affordable home builders are more like National Homes Corporation, which unfortunately was not in existence anymore. I think they closed in nineteen eighty-four. But let's ask the right people, and let's dedicate space for affordable housing. And I want it to be scientific. We need to state what our objective are and our goals. I think to create affordable homes for entry-level, financial level homes for people is a goal. And let's determine what the measures of success are. Are they to be actually owned and occupied by an owner? Or are they purchased and then converted into rentals? Right now, the path you're going down would seem to support Wall Street-owned rentals, allowing conversions without any oversight at all, and that's a huge change. I would suggest let's go small. Let's create small, concise steps. Let's fail fast. If those steps don't work, think of new ideas and repeat the process.
Thank you. Next?
Next up is Alex Gray, and then to follow will be Sue McWhorter.
Let's just start. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Hello, my name is Alex Gray, and I live in Ward Six. I just wanted to express the importance of more housing. It's vital to make space for those who will be here regardless. If it's not decided to take effort in creating that space, you will see the cons of that choice arise more and more as homelessness and crime rates increase due to such lack of housing. Homelessness will continue, and people will yell louder and louder for help. Not creating access to housing doesn't decrease the number of people living here. It just increases the visibility of an already dire situation. And since we do have such a problem with homelessness, take care of it through sustainable means and not through the quick and unethical fixes so many NIMBYs suggest. Don't sweep it under the rug, and don't take heed to the unaware and uneducated in our community who have a disdain for those unlike them. In a society where housing is needed, if you are on the council, act like you care about society by voting for the interests of the whole, because everyone deserves a home and everyone deserves to take up space. On another note, I oppose the security upgrades that we're proposing. AI should not be used to regulate and observe individuals for government security. It has been proven that trained by a bigoted society, they show signs of bigotry themselves. Humans also have far more awareness of differing situations, and we have a better ability to use discretion than what most AI are trained, programmed, or often even allowed to have. I'm against intensive surveillance, let alone spending far more money on integrating a whole new system into our town that is likely to hurt us even more in the long run, along with the fact that it's a twelve-year contract for a technology that is already expanding exponentially. It honestly makes no sense why we try to involve ourselves in such a pointless effort that would keep us stuck and possibly endanger our community. And lastly, on the subject of money, I also oppose the efforts to increase the price for digital transactions. And it feels like a false effort to disguise your desires to make it harder to obtain resources through the Open Information Act. Not to mention, it costs almost nothing for these transactions to actually take place, so the price suggested is honestly insane. To summarize- To summarize, we absolutely need more housing. AI should not be a part of our surveillance, and the money needed for the venture disqualifies its necessity even more. And we need reasonable pricing for digital transactions. That is all.
Thank you. Next.
Next up, we have Sue, and then to follow will be Stephanie Callahan.
Hi, my name is Sue McWhorter, and good evening. I'd like to speak to the Optico's report and the associated zoning, proposed zoning changes. I have, we've, I live in Waterford Estates, which is zoned R2. I've spoken with many of my neighbors last night and today after I became aware of this agenda item on the, on the meeting. And I'd like to speak to agenda items also B, eight B, C, and D. We're, we have deep concerns about the zoning, proposed zoning changes. We moved to this neighborhood, my husband and I, nine years ago because it was a quiet, a single family homes, nice neighborhood. We, we have concerns about the multifamily housing. We already are dealing with an Airbnb across the road from us. And many of the neighbors have been working to, to resolve issues there. It's one thing to have, we do have single, single townhomes on either side of our neighborhood. But it's one thing to have those which are owned by owners, but another to have multifamily housing, which would increase traffic. We have safety concerns. We already have a lack of parking on our streets. And, and this would obviously increase that concern with the lack of parking. It would change the character of our neighborhood. We, it would increase the traffic inside of our neighborhood. We already deal with traffic in, on Oakland Avenue, and we don't have a need for increased traffic in our neighborhood. It would increase the noise. We already, again, deal with noise as well as traffic from Oakland Avenue. We don't need, we don't have a walkable neighborhood. We don't live close enough to any stores or anything else to have a walkable neighborhood. And we also have a mix of older and younger, older people and young families. So we don't need an increase of traffic or increase of, of anything else in our neighborhood. I'd like to ask that you vote this down. I don't believe that our neighborhood is the answer for this multifamily housing or the zoning proposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you. Next up is Stephanie Callahan, and then to follow will be JW Barnett.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak, and thank you for extending the time. Clearly, we have a lot of people here that have some things they want to say tonight, and thank you for giving us that opportunity. My name is Stephanie Callahan, as I mentioned, and I live in Ward three. And I'd like to start by also saying thank you for taking the effort to figure out our housing problems. They are deep and they are complex. And I applaud the city for looking for ways to provide those solutions. However, after reading the Optico's report, I'm concerned about unilaterally applying some of these changes. And it sounds like from the conversations that I've had over the last couple of weeks that there are neighborhoods here who have never been zoned right, and those neighborhoods haven't gone to adjust those things because they didn't see a reason to. You've heard from a lot of Old Farm Lake residents that have expressed that themselves. On the surface, the report appears to provide some analysis, but I'm concerned that I don't see any conversation about infrastructure going along with these changes. And in our neighborhood, we are currently experiencing, this year for the first time, a very large influx of corporations, corporations that are trying to buy the homes in our neighborhood. We do not believe that their intention is to have low cost housing. And we want, we, I would love to encourage the council to have plans that actually take every single neighborhood into consideration and their specifics. We've had a lot of members here from Old Farm Lakes talking today about parking. And I wanted to share a personal story about parking. I too live in Old Farm Lakes, and we already have a parking problem with the 375 homes that we have. So much so that twice this year, I've almost had head on collisions driving down the roads because there are curves in our neighborhood where because of the cars on both sides of the road, the vision, the, you know, vision is obstructed. And we've had cars stop really close, and that's very concerning if you start talking about increasing things. I won't go into more detail because it's all been expressed here. But I thank you very much for the opportunity, and I hope that you will continue this exploration, but not on a unilateral basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Next up, we have JW, and then to follow will be JR Wilkerson.
Good evening, city of Bloomington, city council and surrounding community. It's good to see everybody out here this evening. My name is JW Barnett. I'm the associate pastor at Wesley United Methodist Church and a resident of Ward three. I have two points of intent with my public comment this evening. The first is to show support for items eight B through eight D. And getting out of just the weeds of this evening, any work or anything that comes before the city council that overall helps to increase our population, to grow the economy of our local community, and to share with people who are coming into this community, the character that makes this city great, and to share that with more and more people. You have my full vote of approval on all of those efforts. This is going to be ongoing. We got to get out of the weeds on that one. But here's kind of just the three reasons why I'm supporting it. The McLean County, and I'm excluding the Chicago area in this. If you exclude the Chicago area, McLean County is one of five counties in Illinois that has seen an increase in population since the year 2000. That means this county is one of five that throughout this whole narrative of Illinois is a place where people flock from and leave to go to other states, we have done something in this community correctly. As a transplant to this community raising in, I was born and raised in Southern Illinois. I have consistently been impressed with this community over the last two years. The diversity in the economic market, whether it comes from higher institutions, higher education, corporate sector, working class, all of these things that come together to make this community great. So in the city of Bloomington, also just kind of I'd like to get in the weeds and the paperwork. The city of Bloomington has an economic development plan. If I remember correctly, here I have the number 2012 when this was adapted. But it just kind of outlays and says that from the government's perspective here, that they seek to add economic value and increase employment. And as I like to translate this in my own head, if we create an environment where we have more workers in this community, we're going to have more beds to put those workers in. And as a result, you know, it goes good around a bed? A house. A house goes good around a bed. So anyways, and this number has been given out in the last 30 seconds. But we are an estimated somewhere, some people debate the numbers. But we're about 500 homes short of a healthy housing market. And when we talk about the, replace the word housing with economic, this all comes down to economics. This all comes down to economics. We need healthy economics in our communities. And when we come out here to participate in this process, like we're doing this evening, we're, we're making best use of the rights of our citizenship here. So I encourage the continued debate, the continued word to the city council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Next up is JR, and then to follow will be Stephen Brandon.
Good evening. I'm JR Wilkerson, Nine Stone House Court. I'm in the Harvest Point subdivision. I spoke to you guys, you folks, a couple of weeks ago. You know, I think that this is a very divisive topic. You've got both sides of the fence here tonight. And, you know, I don't think anybody says we don't need housing. Okay, we need that. I worked at Rivian. I get it. I think everybody gets it. But when you sit and you take a subdivision such as Harvest Point, we're in R2, we have some townhomes. But when you start talking about applying the rule to our subdivision, okay? And you take away our right to have a say in that, that's wrong. I talked to you folks last time about if that was your house, okay? And I'm concerned about my neighbors to the north that border a cornfield, okay? So that could be rezoned into anything, the right in their back door. And I know those folks have lived there for years. And they have no say about it, and that's just wrong. Now, I realize I'm behind the scenes on this thing, behind the times on it. You know, this vendor has been approved, apparently, or the vendor has been paid. You know, I understand that, you know, for it to be, come forward to council, it's got to be a $50,000 expenditure. Is that correct? I think so. And so you could technically pay somebody $49,991, and you get this report. So the question is, what other vendors are out there that have experience in this size of community? Knoxville, Tennessee does not look like Bloomington, okay? And then I get concerned personally, when you sit here and you have a city employee that's got experience with that firm. Did we vet all the firms out? Don't know. But I would just say that I ask that you not take a shotgun approach to this. There is opportunities to have affordable housing in places in Bloomington. Farm Lakes is not one of them. Neither is Harvest Point. On a side note, I picked up my granddaughter, have been picking her up in Farm Lakes subdivision. And all of a sudden, I see cars everywhere, there is cars everywhere, and there's signs, park, no parking. Okay, you have people blocking their driveways so they can get in and out. That's not my subdivision. But this tells you the impact that we have or could have on our, our subdivisions. So I encourage you to vote no at this point. Do not take a shotgun approach. Make sure that the city management is looking at these things and break piecemeal them out where we're not taking one big package and shoving it. And you may not be, but that's the perception. We talked about optics, right? Transparency.
JR, can you bring your comments to a close, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is Stephen Brandon, and then to follow will be Patty Bishop.
Good evening. My name's Stephen Brandon. I do live in Harvest Point. I do back up to the cornfield that the other gentleman just spoke about. It's nice having a fence every other year. They got corn, next year I'll have beans. So I just wanted to come out and voice my opinion against the optics report, and won't spend any more time. I'll refer that to my next neighbor.
Thank you. Next.
Next up is Patty Bishop, and then lastly will be William Gustafson.
Thank you.
Hello, as she said, I am Patty Bishop. I am the secretary of the Harvest Point Homeowners Association. We are currently a mix of R1C and R2. We do have a few duplexes, not townhomes, but they are duplexes in our neighborhood. We also do back up to a cornfield slash bean field. And we are aware that the builder that has built the recent homes is currently trying to obtain that land for expansion of our subdivision. I just wanted to pretty much echo what a lot of people here have already said, so I'll keep it short. But we are opposed to any changes that would blanketly change the zoning for R2. We do not want to increase multifamily homes in our neighborhood without any say. We do not like the by right statements that are in the Optico's reports. Again, that takes away anybody's opportunity for discussion for any public hearings or anything like that, so we are not in favor of that. I am also concerned with investors buying these homes and then converting them into multifamily. I'm not worried about really my next door neighbor doing it. I'm worried about them selling it, an investor buying it, and them doing it. We've seen investors buy our, buy homes already, and they've turned them around in three days. They've rented them out without even seeing the house. So we don't want those type of investors to come and change the look and feel of our community. I'm also concerned with the addition that might possibly occur to the north of our subdivision. I don't know how you determine what zoning gets applied to a new subdivision. I believe you'd probably have to first get this added to the city. I'm not sure that it would be. I do know that this area is one of the five walkable communities that was mentioned in the Optico's report near the corner of Towanda Barnes and GE Boulevard. We are opposed to that being one of those walkable communities. It is not walkable to anywhere. You can't even get across the street to the gas station without crossing five lanes of traffic. We don't want apartments in our backyard. We don't want many multifamily homes in our backyard. We don't want a lot of rental property in our backyard, as people have already said. You don't see the rentals being as well maintained as someone that owns one of those homes. We also don't want increased density that comes with multifamily homes. I am concerned with traffic and the parking as well. I do, however, want to say that I do believe we do have a need for more places for people to live. Tracy did mention we need more housing with a focus on homeownership. I don't believe that multifamily units encourage homeownership. Those encourage rentals. I am encouraged that it looks like you're looking at a revised approach to this, and you are going to target specific locations, explore overlay districts, and also allow public processes to occur. So I am encouraged with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize, I do have one other besides William Gustafson. John Biddle will be next.
My name's John Biddle. I spoke three weeks ago. I'm also a resident of the Harvest Point subdivision with my backyard being adjacent to the field that runs to GE Road. And I've only lived there eight years. I've worked hard my, my life. I'm 59 years old. I didn't settle in Bloomington. I lived within my means, and I lived in McLean almost 24 years. Worked hard to pay that house off in 12 years. If it hadn't been for that one, I wouldn't be living where I am now. So with that, with the impact that this could have on so many existing residents, their property values and aesthetics, each property owner should be made aware and not just by word of mouth. There should be a verified proof that each affected neighborhood or resident has been notified and is just not allowed to fly through a city council as it already seems to have taken place. And to reiterate, the changing of zoning codes should be done on a case by case basis, not as a blanket. Many older and rundown neighborhoods could be revitalized to accomplish this goal as they are pretty much already within the 10 minute walk distance to conveniences. I'm familiar with Old Farm Lakes. I have friends and acquaintances that live there. And as far as Harvest Point goes, I'm even more familiar with it. And as of right now, there are no real conveniences within the 10 minutes at the entrance of the subdivision, and there is no walking capability safely anywhere. There are no crosswalks. There are no sidewalks to join anything on the other side of the Towanda Barnes subdivision. As reiterated before, along with homeownership comes pride in that property. With an investor, no. And to bite my tongue is, this is a hard statement to get out, but this has the taste of a Chicago, Illinois, and a California, seeing as how it's out of Berkeley, crooked politics and trying to push it through as fast as it can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers, ma'am?
We do have William Gustafson who registered to speak. However, he's not online. He registered to speak remotely, and we've been waiting for him online. He's not there, so that would be the end of the public comment.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thanks to our speakers. At this point, members, I'd like to move to the consent agenda. Item seven on your packet. Is there any members who have a item they wish to have removed from the consent agenda?
I would like to remove seven H.
Seven, I'm sorry, what was?
H.
H?
Hotel.
And I'd like, I'd like to remove seven C.
That was C?
Yes, sir.
Any other members? Okay, we'll take a vote then for those remaining items on the agenda and come back to the other two. I need a motion.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda aside from those two items second.
That was sec. That was sec, that was motion by member Hendricks and seconded by member Straza. Fine, there you go. All right. You call the roll, please. If you knew the new voting system.
It is passed with no nays to announce.
Thank you very much, ma'am clerk. If we can move back then to the items that were removed and asked for further discussion. I believe the first was from member Ward, number 7H, as in hotel. Okay?
Sure. I'm ready for C if that's
Are you ready?
Yeah.
That's just Member Mosley?
Yeah.
That would be number 7C.
Yeah. I was removing this to recuse myself because I'm one of the people that's on the appointee list.
Okay. Any other comment? Okay. We can go ahead and make a motion to take that vote.
Excuse me.
And will member Mosley need to recuse himself?
Yep, if he could step out of the room, that would be great.
Thank you. Member Montney, do you have a comment?
I'd be willing to make the motion to approve
Thank you.
appointments on item C.
Second.
It'd be seconded by member Danenberger.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. We go ahead and take the vote?
No nays to announce.
Thank you. We move on then to the next item, which will be 7H. And member Mosley is joining us, rejoining us? Member Ward?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I have a couple of questions about one of the paragraphs, the paragraph regarding charging for electronic requests of particular data sizes. And I'm trying to get an idea of how much staff time it takes to to, I guess, download or save a megabyte of PDF records.
We're gonna go ahead and let senior member
Actually, I want to pack
You're gonna pack?
Our city clerk, whose department does the majority, if not all of these requests.
Yeah, like in minutes.
So
Madam Clerk?
Thank you. It's difficult to give exact time. I could come up with data and run reports for it. Our system does track time in that sense, so to say a single megabyte, I don't have a number just to explain exactly what, but it's more than just saving to a USB drive. So what happens when we get a FOIA request, it comes into my department. We determine based on the request what departments need to be involved that might have records applicable to the request. From there, we route it to their department. They each have a rep that starts doing a search and whatnot. And then all of the records then have to go through a legal review to make sure that there's not personal information or other information that would, you know, should not be redacted to protect others. And then from there, then it comes back to our department, and we are the ones who save it to the USB drive. So while I can't say the megabyte, I can tell you a little bit about the number of records that we're talking about in starting the charge. For instance, right now, if you have something printed, the first 50 pages is free. We've been doing that, I think, since 2007. Beyond 50 pages is 15 cents per page. Our electronic records, when we receive those, the only thing we do today is we charge for a USB drive. It's the actual cost of the reproduction, $2.29. A CD is 50 cents. Beyond that, we have not done any other charges, but what we have seen is a 40% increase in the number of requests that we've been receiving since 2023. And thus far this year, we're anticipating another 20% increase. To put those into numbers, it's thousands. I mean, we're gonna end the year with probably 3,500 requests. In 2023, we had, I think, 1,700. I'm going a little farther than your question. I know. Go ahead. Sorry. Yeah.
And I still would like to know how much it costs to do a megabyte, but setting that aside, given that we're probably not gonna get that tonight. How frequently can a person request?
There's no limit.
So I could come in today and request under this proposal, I could come in today and request 80 megabytes and get that for free. Walk out the door and return and get another 80 megabytes for free?
Yep, and that, I was gonna go to that next. Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
So, given that, it feels kind of arbitrary to to be putting that kind of burden on people. Given that it's it's literally a revolving door that we're talking about. And so I would like to, and help me out, city attorney Spanos, with the parliamentary procedure to do this. Do I need to move approval and then make an amendment? Move an amendment?
I believe that's the best way to do it, yes.
Okay. I would like to, and I'm gonna say the whole thing before anybody seconds it, if I can do that. I'd like to move approval of this, but strike the paragraph in this, on the, on page two, that refers to the other request is to begin charging for electronic requests. Just strike that whole paragraph. I'm fine with with the rest of it, but it just seems kind of, kind of arbitrary and unnecessary to put that on people if they can just literally walk out the door. So that's my motion. If anybody wants to second it, you're welcome to. I'm also willing to explain a little bit more. Absolutely. So I'm moving to approve this consent agenda, item 7H, with the exception of the last full paragraph on page two. And that last full paragraph is the one that says the other request is to begin charging for electronic requests of particular data sizes.
So I could help just to say
Yes, sure.
What what you're referring referring to is the council memo, not the ordinance.
I'm sorry. I, yep, you're right.
Why do I amend the ordinance?
Yep, you're right. I'm looking at the wrong thing, so give me a sec here to get back to the ordinance and I'm
If I can, while she's looking for that, just make one other point. Yes, someone can come in and make her new requests for it the next day. What happens, though, is there is a timeline in which we must respond. So if somebody says, I would like every email that my wonderful legal counsel sent in the last 10 years, we have to give that to them, and that's fine, and we have no problem doing that. He says, don't request it. He's just teasing. But the timeline associated to the request is really important here because for a standard for a standard request, we have five days to respond. We do have the right to ask for an extension of time. And for commercial requests, we have 21 days. So if I had the option to put together a new request for somebody every day, I would choose to do that because it would be five days for that one and five days for the next one. I understand it doesn't, but the time that gets associated to it and the shoving it into a small window is when it becomes difficult. That said, I'm happy to do whatever you guys want.
So on the, on the just to make it clear, on the ordinance itself, the section regarding fees for the digital requests, where is that?
So I think if we look at the chart associated to it, where the prices are laid out, there's volumous request. We already have the black and white copies, the less than 50 color, all of that. That's current. If you were wanting to completely remove charging for electronic request, I think what you would want to remove is the PDF records, which, and then everything all the way down to over four megabytes for non-PDF records.
That.
Okay. I can do that. It's supported.
So we have a motion on the floor. Before we go to a second for that, are there questions from members of the council on any point of clarification? Member Straza?
Hey, just a quick question. Maybe you already mentioned this. How many hours out of all the requests we've had so far this year or even last year, how many hours is spent on staff time to get this, which is important? I'm just curious, what are the, because I look at hours times cost, their time.
We have three full-time staff across departments that all they do is FOIA. I, one of the the things that we're pushing for a change is commercial request here where those, what we've seen 25% increase in is commercial requests associated to like YouTube channels, things like that. Our largest requister is from another state, for instance. And we fulfill 20% of our requests. We've done 500, I think, and 51 commercial requests this year. And the individuals that are requesting them are repeat requesters, which we get additional time for also. But what I've heard from my peers is that the moment that you implement some of these changes, that those frequent requesters just move on to another municipality who doesn't manage their time in that that way.
Answer your question?
Kind of, yeah. Like, three full-time staff members are working on this at all times. Another thing to point out is that the number of records that we're getting, that this would actually impact is, I think it's like 150 PDF files, so not including pages. And then there's 16,000 to 80,000 pages that can be included for four megabytes. So we're not talking about an everyday requister that just needs transparency. We're really looking at these really large requests, and there is a lot of time that gets associated to them. Body worn camera footage. Not that we don't want to hand it over. It's just a matter of size and the staff time that gets associated to it.
Number Ward?
Yeah, and to be clear, I'm not talking about the commercial requesters. I'm talking about the non-commercial requesters. So that's what I want to ensure is not charged.
Yes, and that will, it will impact both, so.
So what kind of amendment do I need to make to it not to impact?
Commercial?
Commercial. I would like the
Commercial to the
So could we apply?
I'm just asking our council, could we apply the volumous records to allow electronic to apply to commercial and take it and move it underneath commercial request where we have it at the bottom?
I think, given the changes that you're suggesting that, and the clerk may not be happy with me about this, but I think this maybe is a great time to do a motion to postpone until the next meeting.
I can do that.
We can
I can get you the data that you want.
So I'll withdraw my my motion and I'll
And I ask a question. I do apologize. I am actually not at the 9/22 meeting. So if at all possible, I would love to do this in at the first meeting in October, so I can be here to bring it to you.
Works for me. I've moved then to postpone this until the first meeting in October.
Is there a second? Seconded by member Straza. Clerk, would you take the roll then? Or go ahead and vote, please?
Sorry. Yeah, okay.
I'm gonna have to manually vote?
Yeah, you're not, you don't have it in front of you, actually. I haven't, I haven't turned it out yet. Okay.
Well, my system shut down on me, so.
All right. Sorry, I apologize. Okay, so I had Ward and
Hi. Are we ready to take the vote?
Yes, I apologize that just getting the system going.
Okay. Other members okay with their devices to vote?
And councilmember Mosley, how would you like to vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, Leslie, I don't think that this matches. This is the redevelopment agreement of 2210 North Center.
Thank you. This is the end of the new system. I do apologize. Okay.
That's okay.
Let's get the right one here.
Madam Clerk, could we
I can just call it. I'm gonna just
Take a voice vote for everybody and to, for a point of clarification, does everyone understand now the motion that's been made to bring this back in October before council?
Yes, applicable to 7H. All right.
Motion was by member Ward, seconded by member Straza, and then we'll go ahead and
I'll just call it quick. Councilmember Kearns. Yes. Councilmember Mosley.
Yes.
Councilmember Montney.
Yes.
Councilmember Danenberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Straza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott.
Yes.
Thank you. No nays to announce.
No nays to report. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the consent agenda items on the calendar. We'll now move into the regular agenda of tonight's meeting, starting with 8A. And at this point, it is a consideration and action on a resolution dealing with approval of the early termination of the Exxon Exxon contract. And I know that our chief, who is coming up front here, Jamal Summington, will speak to the issue and explain. So thank you, chief.
Mayor, if you don't
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. You're fine. Now, if you don't mind, I'm actually gonna, and we can turn things over to deputy city manager Sue McGlaughlin, whose team has been integral integrally involved in this project, and we've been talking about it for some number of years now. She can kick things off.
Thank you, city manager McGlaughlin.
Thank you, both of you. Just very quickly, before I introduce Chief Summington, I understand there's been some concern about the timing of this agreement. So I wanted to make sure that we put out there that this agreement has been negotiated since July of 2024. That's how long our administration and the BPD have been working on this. It does include a portion of the records management system, but it's no connection to the ongoing discussions regarding the shared sales tax agreement with the county, town, and the city. BPD has used Exxon for a number of years with a great track record for many pieces of equipment, tasers, body cameras, things such as that, and their corresponding software, so it's not just the RMS. Chief Summington's gonna get into more of that in a moment. So I'm going to toss it to him, but I wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you very much. Chief?
Good evening, council mayor. We appreciate the opportunity to present tonight, and I want to start off with a deep thank you, a sincere thank you, sincere thank you, I should say, to Assistant Chief Aaron Veerman, who's the project lead for this and has done a stellar job tonight. In the room is Jake Sheedy. He's a Exxon key account executive that we've been working with. As you know, it is our mission to work honorably and steadfastly to improve livability here in the city of Bloomington. And applying continuous innovation is a part of that. Exxon has been a partner for 22 years and serves over 17,000 law enforcement agencies around the world. Next slide, please. Why renew now? Certainly, we've we've explored all options and with the intent of continuous improvement along the way, it is imperative that we do what's best for our city and those we are responsible for protecting. This agreement will prevent some loss of equipment. We rely on their body worn cameras, their fleet cameras, as well as the taser and interview room now for what our operation calls for. And this will allow us to not lose the maintenance of those pieces of equipment. And then also, as some of those become, come to their end of life, we can then make the appropriate acquisition of new equipment. We currently maintain a cloud, or I should say Exxon does, of 18, I'm sorry, over 800 terabytes of digital evidence. That's over 800 terabytes of digital evidence. This will allow us to complete this transaction will allow us to to further maintain that. Also, this will allow us to capitalize on a package. That package could save us 7% to 10% each year as prices increase. Spreading out the major costs over the life of the contract Spreading out the major costs over the life of the contract is essential, as it does save the city money in the long run, but also keeps us locked into the, the best technology that is out there. McLean County Sheriff's Department, as well as the Normal Police Department are looking into this, and some of the smaller agencies in our county are also interested in a RMS system that is built by Exxon. So we are keeping our, our partners in mind as, as we go through this. A refresh on the tasers are important, they only have about a five-year shelf life, and Exxon has provided a newer taser that is more robust and certainly dependable, which leads to less liability issues for, for the city and as well as in, reduces the amount of injuries our officers have to deal with when dealing with unruly subjects. The nine interview rooms we currently have are now on the Windows 10 software. This will allow us to upgrade those to the newest technology there as well. And then the drones that we currently have are DGI drones, they're not built in the United States of America. We anticipate the federal government will discontinue that, and we would have to upgrade drones to the current technology here in the United States. Next slide, please. As we deliver essential public services to our community, Exxon has been a stellar partner. They've been able to provide a product that has only about a, less than 1% downtime over the course of that 22 years. That's remarkable. The entire ecosystem will enhance officer safety and efficiency. We'll have cutting-edge technology as that new technology rolls out with this company that has been very responsive. There are warranty clauses, as well as our officers have been able to pilot a lot of the new add-ons that Exxon has provided, free of cost, and the officer feedback has been substantially positive. Auditing and permissions, that is important for accountability internally and throughout the system, and it's something Exxon has been able to provide and score a high value with us. Next, please. Adopting this tonight would allow our officers to move into a ecosystem that is a one-stop-shop, improving efficiencies, will also protect against future price increases, protect against the expansion by controlling the cost of new equipment as that rolls out from Exxon. And it will also protect us from unforeseen circumstances and the new, new technology by covering the products under a maintenance agreement. If we call and say we have an issue with something, Exxon has been very responsive. They've overnighted equipment that's needed to maintain what we need to deliver to service that's expected of the police department, and then will allow us to budget, plan accordingly into the next 12 years. Next, please. So what's included in this array of software? The Exxon Report Writing System, this includes the build-out of that, and it takes advantage of, again, a, a single ecosystem and decreases the amount of redundancy that's done through redundant programs that we currently have for our staff and our officers. The Exxon Standards is an accountability piece. It will help us manage internal investigations, complaints from those we serve, use of force, and early warning systems, so we can detect any misappropriate or unappropriate behavior by our officers. Exxon Reduction, as we deal with a tremendous amount of FOIAs, as you've heard Madam Clerk speak about tonight, Exxon provides a redaction assistant, which incredibly enhances our time of, of staff, having to go through those manually to make sure that they're redacted appropriately. Exxon Draft 1 is something we have piloted, and we had permission from the State's Attorney's Office to do so. This allows officers to populate their, their narrative from the AI based on the recordings on the body worn camera and in-car cameras. This saves officers approximately 15 to 30 minutes on what I would say is a simple investigation report. It's more than that for something that's more complicated. In 2024, just for your reference, we generated over 18,000 reports, 18,000 police reports. Of course, that translates into about 4,000 to 800 hours of time that officers are spending that we're able to save, again, another increase in efficiency. Exxon FUSIS allows a combination of several other systems into one place and will serve our real-time crime center well by quickly providing information that we need in investigations. This has proved very fruitful in several of our recent investigations, including one that involved a murder. Auto-Transcribe and Translation, this allows an officer to use the body worn camera there on-site, real-time, to record or listen to a person that speaks a foreign language. This will transcribe it right there on the spot. The officer will then be able to provide a response back to that individual real-time in order to get to the bottom of that person's complaint or any other issues that he or she may have. Exxon My90 is something that we have been using for a while to send out post-contact surveys to our community members who call upon us for public safety, and that has allowed us to effectively provide a higher level of response to our community members and is well-received within the department. It's a report card on, on how well we're doing. Investigate is an opportunity for us to enhance videos and prepare videos, for instance, for court, as the State's Attorney's Office has a high requirement for those for jury trials and, and bench trials. It will also allow our Internal Affairs Personnel Investigators to proof those things and do it in a more efficient manner. And then, as you may, may be aware, corporate counsel on, on occasion has to field information from us concerning any lawsuit that may come before the city, and this will provide an opportunity to do that more efficiently as well. Performance, this is an accountability piece where supervisors are required to monitor or review body worn camera footage on, on an occasion for their subordinates. This will allow the system to detect bad language, for instance, or if the system detects that there's a, a conflict between an officer and a person that they're having a communication with. This will alert that supervisor to go into the system and deal with that matter appropriately. Auto-tagging is, is important. As we go from call to call, that call is naturally attached to the call for service, which allows for automatic tagging of that event and swift, a, a swift ability for us to retrieve that information as officers write reports or they're being reviewed by supervisors. And then there's an unlimited digital storage. You've heard me refer to the 800 terabytes of digital evidence, which continues to grow every day. Next, please. So this agreement will, will allow for hardware and other refreshers for the equipment that we currently have. The body worn camera refresh as newer technology comes out, the in-car camera as well, and then the VR is a new opportunity for us to use in, in the department internally, in a controlled environment where officers can, can receive training. That could be from de-escalation training to the ability to use a taser or their handgun to address specific matters that they're dealing with. And then that will all be recorded, and of course, if there are any issues of deficiency that could be addressed right away. The Exxon Drone is a program that continues to grow throughout the United States of America. I think later this week, I, I joined a, a conference where they'll talk about that remotely to hundreds of agencies around America. Drone is, is an effective technology, but this agreement also provides an opportunity for us to have a D-drone program, meaning anyone who uses a drone for something malicious can be intercepted and brought down to the ground immediately with the new technology that will be rolling out through Exxon. Next, please. So with this contract and Exxon's patience with us over the, the past several months, it does include a non-appropriation clause. So if US Council, say, in the next fiscal year, for instance, we don't have the funds to continue to fund this program in its entirety, we will let Exxon know, and then we would discontinue parts of that, that agreement. This locks in pricing for equipment for the next seven years. This contract also provides for an opener to allow any changes that will effectively benefit the community. It frontloads the cost, and there is a ability to avoid any renewal penalty. It includes the maintenance repairs, as I mentioned earlier. It requires Exxon to maintain and upgrade equipment on a regular basis or issue a refund. And then the records management system can be terminated up until kickoff without any penalty. So that is something that may be concerning with how it looks for our partners in the future. And then any new software that is launched throughout the contract will be provided to us. Next, please. This 12-point-year agreement is in the amount of $13,559,883.81. As you will see with the schedule there, the increases occur incrementally. Right now, the current contract will require a payment of $745,000, and it goes up from there. In what Exxon provided, based on the bundling that, that's in the contract versus the list price and MSRP, if we would get this as an à la carte, for instance, pick and choose certain things, that comes at a higher cost. And so for the entirety of this agreement, this would, would save us over $11 million, which is a cost-saving opportunity. Next, please. Just the records management overview, we are in touch with our partners. I spoke with the sheriff and Chief Petrelli from Normal Police Department today, and also with Chief Woodruff from the Illinois State University Police Department. It is a mandate for me that we continue to share information with our partners and keep that relationship strong, and so we won't lose that with this opportunity. As a group, if we all decide to go with Exxon, there will, there will be no penalty to remove the RMS from the contract through February of 2026. So our partners can make a decision to join on prior to that date, and it would be amenable by, by Exxon. Option number two, if the county declines to move forward with Exxon and our partners, we have a locked-in pricing for, for everything that we're involved in and can move forward with Exxon on our own. Option number three, if our local law enforcement partners decide to remain with Caliber before February of, of 2026, Exxon can remove the RMS from the contract at no cost. If more time is needed and a decision is, is made to opt out after February, we would only be billed for the amount of time that Exxon invest in programming for the new system. Next, please. So from a communication perspective, I talked about my mandate. It is important that we share the information with our partners. If some decide to go with Caliber, there is a software out there called Boomi. Exxon is familiar with it, we've talked to their engineers, and they are able to program the system to talk and share information with Caliber or any other potential future RMS system that either party may, may decide to take on. So that Boomi software is also being used for the county system itself to communicate to each other. They're, they're gonna have a jail system, they'll have a court system, they'll have a probation system. So Boomi is essential for us to keep open communication and sharing amongst agencies as we go forward. That concludes the presentation. If you have any questions, I will take those now.
Thank you very much, chief. Are there questions from members of the council?
I have a question, chief.
Members Strazza.
Yes, in the earlier discussions that people, public comment, they were talking about the technology portion, their concern. My understanding from what you've said tonight is that the technology will continue, they will continue to update the technology in the next 12 years, next whatever years they're not, it's not like we buy what we get today and we stay with that and we're stuck with that for the entirety. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes, sir, that is correct. And Exxon has truly taken law enforcement by, by a storm because their engineers, their researchers are working on a daily basis to provide a product to law enforcement agencies around the United States, which, which is growing, which is getting better, and within the confines of, of the laws here in the state of Illinois and, and any federal concerns. They have a very good marketing team, of course, we, we all understand that, but they're, they're tried and true. You know, other chiefs envy the fact that we have this, and they, they would like to have that as well in their communities, and it does take a commitment to lock that in. But also to, to speak further on that, we know it's important that we follow all laws that are in place. There are accountability pieces that the software provides, and oversight is important. So we'll be sure to, to use, utilize that in the, the most favorable way that's legal and lawful and ethical.
Other members? Member Scott?
Yes, thank you very much, thank you. So grateful that, that, that folks spoke on, on our, our relationship with the county and Normal and making sure that we are continuing to go forward. I appreciate this information. I listened to the county board executive meeting, and Chair Johnson mentioned a good conversation that she had with you this weekend, so I'm, I'm certainly grateful for that. And I hope that, that, you know, we continue to have good conversations going forward. My question is on new technology. So a lot of this stuff, you know, drones and tasers and all that kind of stuff are, are things that we already have and we're, you know, revamping or, or making better. AI and reporting, I understand that it, you know, it saves a lot of time, but, you know, we all know that, that AI has a, a potential to hallucinate. Can you, can you talk about the, the fail safes and the protection that we've got to, to make sure that doesn't happen with reporting?
Yes, for sure. And Exxon is forward-thinking. They provide a product where it may, it will generate a narrative. That narrative is a draft narrative for an officer to review from a body worn camera recording. Within the report are baked-in brackets and false information that is generated purposely to make the officer go through and check the validity of the information that's in there. They have to touch that narrative several times before they get to a finished product. That allows for self-audity, and value add is, if they don't make the change to any of that, the report cannot be submitted. So the, the software is smart enough to figure that out. Once that, those, that information is, is made, the officer has to attest that the changes are accurate and the report reflects on fact. And then that report's submitted, and a supervisor will then review the report, go through it to also determine that the report is valid based on the information that, that was reported in that particular incident. Using it in, in other ways, Exxon has also put in, in these auditing features for us to, to make sure that the AI is used appropriately and, and professionally with layers of, of ethics and involved in that process.
Other members? Number Ward?
Thank you. Thanks for this overview and for the conversations about this. My question has to do with the sense of timing of moving forward with this. Can you speak to the, the urgency of doing this right tonight? The reason I'm asking is because it's my understanding that the, the county and the town and the city have a conversation scheduled already next, for next week? Maybe I'm wrong on the time to talk about the RMS. Am I on target with the timing? I think there's a meeting coming up, and, and if so, why not just wait until after that meeting and then maybe get further along in terms of some of the options that you had listed?
Yes, so it's, it's my understanding in, in having tons of communications with Exxon representatives that we've been trying to get this before council for months, and they have fine-tuned the agreement to the point where there's nothing else they can do for us. And so we, we told them of tonight's council meeting, that's why they're here, to, to see if it goes forward. But the important piece is they have a schedule for what their items are gonna cost for what's coming up as they enter into the last quarter of the year. I don't know what that looks like for us, but anything that we don't agree to now will, will be a cost increase above and beyond what they've, they've already quoted us. The other part, ma'am, is the fact that we have the out calls built into that. So if we agree to. So if we agree to, to take on the agreement in its, in its totality, meaning everything is bundled, we can certainly pull out if that doesn't work out. I think I was able to mention that in those, those available options. So it's, it's what's best now for, for what we have available to us.
Thank you.
Member Hendricks?
And Chief, just along with that, the numbers that we saw, those are the numbers that include if we move forward with RMS, correct? Those numbers may look less if we were to shift to the shared sales tax with the county and, and the town?
Yes, sir. We will not be charged until we get to a point of initiation. But if we withdraw, they will then take those monies that are assigned to that particular item, they would remove that from the agreement.
Okay. I appreciate that. There's been some talk of duplication of, of efforts here and that's just simply not the case. Thank you.
Any other members with questions? Member Lee?
Yes, just so Chief, just to clarify, you have been in communication with the other law enforcement officers and chiefs along this process, correct?
Yes, sir. We cross paths numerous times a month, either scheduled meetings or otherwise. Again, Normal's met with Axon executives and they're working on something there that I can't speak to. Of course, I, it would be improper for me to do so. They've also met with the sheriff's department as recent as, as last week and have other meetings scheduled to talk about it as well. Our smaller agencies have expressed their desire to look into some of the features that Axon provides for them as well. So you'll see in internal to the document that we're able to freeze maximum cost for program implementation if those smaller agencies decide to join on. And then for those that are even smaller, they, they pretty much get a sweet deal and not, not have the, the overhead or the burden of the cost for their two or three officers, for instance. Well.
Other members? Questions, comments? Chief, as one who has been part of the birth of Metcom many, many years ago, what is the potential if the same system is not used by Normal and the county? What interface potential is there with other vendors that may not be what Bloomington is doing now?
Yes, sir. So that's the Boomi feature. It's a software that would, would be programmed for each of those systems to talk to each other. So what's vital for one system to know and, and vice versa, that information exchange will occur with that programming. And that is also included in the agreement, working through Boomi to make sure that is a reality.
So the potential is there to interface?
Yes.
No matter what happens from any other future discussions. And also is this anything that has any potential for the fire department in the future?
So, sir, the drone as a first responder, yes, from a public safety perspective. I know Axon has looked, looked at providing body worn cameras to paramedics, for instance. So some of those things are, are out there, they're, they're expanding their product to even have body cameras in hospitals is my understanding sometime in the future. So I, I, I won't say never, but from a reporting perspective, this is strictly for law enforcement.
Thank you. Any other members? I'll make a motion to approve. Motion on the floor, seconded by Member Strazza. Men clerk? Ready to take the vote or would you like to do a voice vote?
All right, the vote is live mostly. Do you have council member, you do it? Okay. All right, you're back. And there's no nares to announce.
Thank you very much. Then the motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Next item is 8B of our regular agenda, consideration and action on an ordinance approving text amendments to the zoning code of the city of Bloomington. And our deputy city manager, Mr. Tyus, if you would speak to that, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of council. One of the things that I think is, is important is that I think we've gotten to a point where this community realizes that we're in the midst of a housing crisis. We heard it tonight. I think we've heard that people have said, you know, this is beyond just needing a few units. We need, we need to do something and do it now. It says a lot when the city manager goes to meet with businesses and others on our staff and he asks them, as he regularly does and we do, what can we do to help you? And in, in several cases, it's been find me more housing units. It wasn't about give me more money or incentives, it was about we need housing. And so the next three items as proposed, while they're three separate items, they're proposed to help with that. The first two address some more immediate needs as it relates to getting units online. And the third, the optico's item, which a lot of folks have spoke to tonight, is a more mid to long range roadway or, or path forward. If, if, if supported. We also know there's no silver bullet. There's no magic wand. There's no one type of housing that we're going to be able to do. Missing middle is not the answer to all of our issues. It's part of a puzzle. And so one of the things that we have done over the last few months, if people have spoken to this and people have had questions and concerned, concerns, we've listened. We've heard from people. We've heard from people tonight and also in the past about some of the questions they had. And we feel as though we have implemented or added some of those to some of the items you're going to hear tonight to try and address some of the concerns. We have Kelly Pfeifer, who is Director of Development Services and Alyssa Pemberton, who is our, our planning manager, I get your title right, Alyssa, who are here to really talk through the specifics of the individual items. But I wanted to say in particular, with the optico's item tonight, and I want everyone to hear this, what is being proposed is different than what I think people understood was being proposed. And it is doing what people are asking for tonight, which is asking permission and direction to do more work, to be more targeted, to study infrastructure needs in particular areas, to, to, to identify areas and create what are known as overlay districts that are much smaller than a citywide zoning-based approach to anything that might come from that. And so when we get to that item, we'll speak more to that, but I just wanted people who are still here with us, who have braved the length of the meeting to, to hear that, that what you're asking for, specifically as it relates to the optico's item, is what we're asking for tonight. And so with that, the first item is related to a, a text amendment. And Kelly and Alyssa, I'll ask you to speak to this, but very generally, what it does, it allows for some small commercial uses in residential districts, small scale shops in higher density areas and for single family homes to be built on, above the ground floor downtown. The other thing it does is that it addresses some issues related to actually being able to build ADUs or accessory dwelling units. Now, I know there are different opinions and different perspectives on ADUs and what they mean for a neighborhood and how they can not be great and a whole bunch of other things, which we understand and appreciate. So one of the things that we are proposing is that instead of that being allowed by right, which is, I know several people have talked about things happening by right, that ADUs, in addition to the other changes, be allowed by special use and special use permit. So in that instance, if someone were looking for an ADU, it would go through the process and ultimately be considered by plan commission, ZBA, ZBA, and ultimately approved by the city council. So there's an additional level of, of oversight that allows for the construction where appropriate, but also where not. If this council felt as though they were not appropriate, you would have, you would have final approval. And so that's part of what's being discussed on this first item. And with that, Kelly and Alyssa, I'll ask that you kind of describe what else is there?
Thank you. Well, you actually did a pretty good job and hit on literally every high point. You were right. So I want to thank everyone that is here tonight and is a part of this process. So it is very important to hear from the public and from council. And we have, that we originally presented this in July to plan commission. It was one text amendment as we presented, then there were some concerns, so we split it into three. Last month, you passed one point, which was just cleaning up some stuff. These are the last two items of that package that went to plan commission. So really what we have heard tonight and reiterated over this time is the ADU process. In the beginning of 23, we put in use provisions for ADUs. They have to be owner occupied as a primary residence. They can only be under 800 square feet. There, there were some things that we put into code that we believe would mitigate some of the negative situations with them. However, we acknowledge that this is a very diverse community and its specific areas and lot sizes are very diverse amongst R2. You have some that are incredibly tiny and some that are incredibly large, for one. So the special use process is one that's already in code. So what it would be is that it would go to the zoning board of appeals for consideration. They make a recommendation. A special use has six general criterias and standards for approval. Those are already codified. Most of the things that people talked about tonight, traffic, infrastructure concerns, those are all elements of that consideration by the zoning board of appeals. So their recommendation would then come to city council. It is also by nature, a very site-specific approach. So it does add more process, but it does appear to be a process that the community would like and it would give you guys more of an opportunity for that site-by-site consideration. So the current text amendment is basically trying to strike the minimum lot size per dwelling. We still would like that stricken. It's another provision that is incredibly confusing when we have all of these different variables. But as it relates to ADU, it'll mitigate it. So now any potential property could be considered for a special use. The use provisions are still in there about lot coverage. You can only cover 30% of your rear yard, has to be owner occupied, but it will enact the ability to add some other special circumstances and considerations and criteria. So that is what, so we do, we would like the resolution or the ordinance adopted as presented, but with that amendment, that you'll see that the accessory dwelling units are by special use and they're subject to those provisions in the code. So happy to answer any questions or concerns on this first amendment.
And with that? You have something else? And with that, is there questions or comments?
So just to, thank you. Just to clarify, it sounds like you're loosening it up in terms of, of eliminating the minimum lot size, but you're tightening it up by requiring that extra layer of scrutiny and approval with a special use permit. So it sounds like it's kind of, kind of a wash in the sense of, of, I don't know what the big controversy is, I guess.
It, it could be seen as a wash. So one of the things is we never believed that the intention would have been that you could only use an accessory dwelling unit if you had a lot that was twice the minimum. We never thought that that was the intent in the ordinance. Why wouldn't you just do two primary ones and plat them? We could have tried to do something more complicated with your lot had to be a certain percentage over X and all of this. It did not seem to us to be worth that complexity to put that in. So we actually believe since the, what we're hearing are the issues can be most addressed through the special use rather than implementing other provisions.
Member Montney? I'm sorry, are you done? Okay.
It's all right.
You'll hear time to you for right now.
Well, I don't have a question so much as I was going to make a motion. So if there's more questions, I'm always happy to, to hear more questions.
Member Montney?
So, thank you. And this change to special use just occurred evidently because we just received notification of that on Friday. I just want to confirm that that's correct.
That is correct.
Okay. So this item and of course C and D and 8D are all related to zoning code. So the removal of the minimum lot area per dwelling is being requested across all residential zoning codes, which effectively just increases the ability for density. Am, am I understanding that correct? I've read that in the APA information and other information that's out available.
So there's a, a subtlety here that is important. While it is removing the density or removing the lot size per dwelling unit, it's not removing the minimum lot size. And any R1, single family district only has the ability to have a single house. It can have accessory, but it does not have the ability to have what's called two principal structures. So it can't have two big houses on it, right? So by removing the minimum lot size per dwelling, you still can have only one house, but now we can have an accessory with special use. Does that make sense?
While it, while it makes sense, it certainly weaves all of these things together. And it's important that we consider all of these different changes together. And we were just here a little over 90 days being asked in that context to take a, a very, and I'd be happy to read the resolution, but I'm sure everyone's patience is running thin here. But just taking this item specifically, as we see this coupled with the next item we're going to see, which increases building heights, and I want to talk specifically about R2, because a lot of the single family neighborhoods are zoned I, R2. We will be seeing those two things in concert and those are examples of things that relate to why we've had such an outpouring of concern with the depth of what's also being proposed in 8D. So on this ADU cleanup, why is that connected to the removal of minimum lot area per dwelling? Because the ADU cleanup language on its face seems like a step in the right direction to your point in the presentation. But I'm not understanding how one connects to the other unless these changes related to the removal of the minimum lot size per dwelling unit is motivated by other factors. Do we have any current cases pending where people are seeking permit that they would like that particular area removed?
Yes, ma'am. And we actually, so we have one ADU in the community that's already been built. Fortunately, that person had a five acre lot, so they were able to have both a primary home and an accessory home on that same lot. Any lot in the community that has an, a dwelling unit per lot restriction rather than just a minimum lot restriction tells me that you cannot have both an accessory dwelling unit and a primary dwelling unit unless you have a double size. Because accessory is not exempted from that number. So while we have allowed all of these accessory structures, in 23, we implemented the restrictions. We've talked many, many times about wanting to move this forward. We have one remaining provision that just in simple, where the period is and where the comma is in your code, right? Is that remaining restriction?
Alyssa, can I?
Go ahead.
Try and speak to, to that. One of the things that we're run into as it relates to the minimum lot size is, and correct me where I'm wrong, is there is a lot size requirement for your primary residence, a minimum. And right now, that same standard is applied to ADUs, even though they're significantly smaller, which means that in all reality, you're, even though we allow ADUs, they're not able to get built because very few people in this community have properties that are that large. And so by removing the minimum standard, we are allowing for practical building of these units, which people have said that they're interested in and that help with the housing issue. But by making it a special use, we are saying we understand and respect the fact that neighborhoods have individual character and individual issues and giving another layer of protection or restriction for when they're allowed. Did I, is that right?
Yeah, it's like, so if everyone has to have a pocket to fit their phone in, you, you shouldn't have to have a pocket to fit two phones in, in order to also be able to carry lipstick, right? That ADU, that ADU is the lipstick on our ability to have people age in place, to be able to keep their, their older children who don't want to have to go to dinner with them every night. We've been able to build an accessory thing with a bathroom since 1988, I think was when the, or 1979, when the. We've been able to build an accessory thing with a bathroom since nineteen eighty eight, I think was when the, or nineteen seventy nine, when the, but we haven't been able to put a kitchen in it. That's the biggest difference. That's all the differences is someone wanting to be able to be a full dwelling on a property where they can already have a, a rooming.
So then why, why are you suggesting that we remove the minimum dwelling size or minimum unit per dwelling, or I'm sorry, I'm saying these things backwards in all residential zoning codes? Because I'm trying to marry that up with commitments that the city manager has shared with me that, that staff is going to take a different approach and take out some of these all across the board zoning changes. But we're talking about right now, the removal of the minimum square foot per dwelling unit. However, in the next item, we're going to be talking about in neighborhoods like Old Farm Lakes, increasing the building heights across the board to three stories. And I, I don't want to get ahead of the other item, but these things all work together. And it's not what is right before us right now with one person in this room who has a use case that this might make sense for. But it's us establishing code changes with regard to this one issue that could allow down the road, multiple ADUs, which is what was recommended to us when we were here together in May. So I don't want to set up a situation where there are unintended consequences that haven't been explored just because there's a lot of passion to move forward. I want to say one other thing in context. When I hear comments like do something, we have to do something. I believe we have approved between two and three thousand units of housing across this community of all types already through council that just haven't broken ground because of macroeconomic issues, primarily the cost of building and also interest rates. So it's not that we have not done anything. There has been a tremendous amount of effort made to close the gap.
So I'm not going to try and justify it because it's your decision, but I do want to reply to three specific things because you asked questions. One is the reason that we're proposing the removal for every district is that we've seen requests in every district. The only ADU that's been installed so far is in an R one A property. So from, from the perspective of what the community has shown us, it is needed everywhere. The second is that it's very important that we take all of these together. That's why when the planning commission reviewed it, they couldn't reviewed it as a package and recommended it as a whole package. We needed to have more detailed conversation here and that's okay. But we very intentionally are moving forward these so that we understand them in a holistic way. And I apologize, I didn't answer your previous question directly. There are four additional ADUs in a variety of districts that are currently waiting to be able to be permitted.
So I, I've looked up all of those on the map. I was provided the addresses, which I appreciate. They weren't distributed all over the community. I presume there must be other pending requests then that I haven't seen because I did list, I did request to see all of the lists to get an understanding of what's going on with this. And a couple of them are on lots that are approximately one tenth of an acre. And when you do this, according to many things that I have read on the internet, you're, you're doing something really interesting with the amount of permeable to non-permeable surfaces on these lots. And these are the very things that just, you know, four years ago, we sat in this room and talked about with anguish as we were watching and responding to many of the folks in this community who suffered flooding during that time. So how are you going to ensure without any data that's being provided to us to manage this? That the permeable ratios to non-permeable surfaces, the water management, the infrastructure issues and all of those things that we can envision in the future are being addressed? If we're just going to blanket, remove that ratio across all of our zoning codes?
I'm, I'm not sure exactly, I really do want to answer your question and your concern. There is a buildable area on a piece of property. We acknowledge what that buildable area is when we do the stormwater planning and calculations. We act as if the entire buildable area is impervious. That is how that works.
Right.
The ADU, if it's in the buildable area, is not a factor. We have put in a provision where the ADU can only occupy thirty percent of the rear yard for that exact reason. We are worried about impervious surface addition. So most people don't use their whole buildable area anyway. There is a separation requirement between a detached ADU and a primary structure that we believe that stormwater won't be, as far as impervious surface goes, a problem beyond how our code structures the stormwater compliance when we do the original design.
How do you intend to handle the additional demand for off-street parking?
The ADU provisions that are currently in the code require an additional parking space for each ADU that is constructed.
So just again, looking back at the lots that I pulled up, that the list that I was given by the city when we've got a lot size of point one one, and this is one of the ones that are in queue. Because other than that, there were only two that appeared to be ready, if you will, to, to move forward. And it's my understanding, one of those is pended because of the size of the ADU, perhaps that the individual wants to build. And then the other is what we're talking about here with, with the example that you gave earlier. That we had a commenter about twice.
Do you ladies have an answer to the question?
So.
Okay, thank you, thank you, just, just a minute. I didn't ask everybody, just a minute.
Just.
Go ahead, please finish.
Make as well is the planning commission who met on this, I believe in June, is that correct? So it was June. If we are to rely on their discussions, how do we get access to those discussions? I, I have requested the recording for that meeting to understand what the deliberation was, how that sounded like. And I have not received a response to that request.
Madam Clerk, do you have a?
Yeah, I can answer. So we, the minutes are used, the, the recording of each one is used to write the minutes. And then disposal of the recording, we're able to do that as well. So it just kind of depends on the timing. The June recording should still exist and we should be able to give that to you. But the minutes are the final version after they're adopted by that board.
So other than the one example then on this particular B, eight B, are there any other pending requests that would have required a different process other than the one that you've mentioned earlier? There's no other conversations with no other pending projects that would have required public notice and special use, et cetera, that are not as a result of this change?
I'm sorry, I am not understanding your question. I'm, Billy, can you help? I'm not.
So I will pin that.
I'm sorry.
The next item, because I believe that one has to do with also the bear ratio, the far ratio, the other items that you have. I mean, at least I was provided it by the city manager, a, a proposal that is going to be impacted by that that as a result would not require notice to nearby neighbors.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ramani, thank you. Member Ward.
Yeah, I think.
At the end of time.
I know we are, and so I was going to propose just a couple more minutes of time. I do have two questions.
Counsel. Fine, yes, go ahead.
Is there a motion for how much?
Motion, second.
I'll move for five more minutes.
Five minutes, okay, great. And we actually can just.
Motion by member Ward and second by member Mosley. Go ahead, please.
Got it, we can do a voice vote now on these.
Voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So my two questions. First off, is the purpose of the special use permit provision not to address some of the concerns that might arise about, about any given location?
Yes.
Thank you. And secondly, are there any, the, the four ADUs that council member Montney mentioned? What wards are those in and what are any of them in Old Farm Lakes or Harvest Point?
No, the one that's been constructed, I believe is in two. The six, four. And I can't do my numbers right now. Down here between six and, thank you. Yeah, yeah, six, four, eight, thank you.
I'll move approval of this.
Second. There's a motion by member Ward and a second by member Hendricks, Madam Clerk. Take the vote.
Councilmember Montney, I don't have your vote, sorry. Great, it passes and there's two nays to announce for the record.
Could you say that for the record, please?
Thank you, Councilmember Montney and Councilmember Lee.
Thank you very much. Onto the next item on the agenda is item C, which is a consideration in action on the ordinance, approving text amendments to the zoning code of the city of Bloomington. And if our deputy city manager, Mr. Tyus?
Kelly and Alyssa, in the interest of time, can you give a brief overview of what this would mean so we can leave time for questions, please?
I'll do it. Sure, we'll do this as quickly as possible. To me, one of the biggest points is this will hopefully allow us to plat attached homes. So there's just some discrepancies between the subdivision code and the zoning code. And if we fix the lot width versus the zoning lot, we would be able to effectively plat townhomes versus just simply structure a condo situation.
For those who may not know what that means, the non-planners in the room, can you explain that?
That's so hard, sorry, I am a planner. So plating is to also own the land underneath your house and in a defined way. So no one else owns your land. In a condo situation, usually the land is owned in a collective and you own between your walls. So there are two levels of financing, insurance, et cetera, that deal with condos. Whereas if you can plat and own land along with your house and no one else owns it, it simplifies the financing part and simplifies the insurance portion. So there's simply, there are ways to do it. It usually requires variances and a lot of maneuvering and waivers of the subdivision code. That is what we are trying to clean up here. There are some points in this one that I think a, a council member Montney is very concerned about, and that is the heights. The heights of the buildings. So we have two multifamily zoning districts. And the lower R three A has the same height limits as a single family zoning. And they have, there's two mechanisms to understand height, stories and height. And they fight each other in the table. We were struggling to figure out what one applies, the more conservative or the more liberal. So we knew we needed to fix the conditions between the zoning and the height. So we also referenced the building code. We also believe there was an important to have something and an incremental approach. So we have two different multifamily densities. And the R three B has a six floor height limit. And then again, we're at, we're at two point five. So I guess anticipating we'd have lower type units for the third floor. So what we're trying to do is increase the height limits in R three A to provide a little bit of an incremental difference. Because traditionally what you want is you don't want a really tall building next to a single family home. And while we have provisions for certain setbacks, some things that will, that will mitigate that, the fact of the matter is we'd like our incremental zoning to work the same way. So the R three A, some of those heights are to help split that difference. But I think Councilmember Montney has some concerns with R two in particular. And we can talk more about that if that is a concern amongst other members, so.
Member Montney?
It is a concern. And these things are in the report that we were asked to vote on, on May the twenty seventh. I realize that you're differentiating them as being not included or already in process, notwithstanding the Opticus consulting engagement. But it's not just that you're taking R two to three stories. But in, and again, on both of these issues, on their face, I would be able to support. But what I'm concerned about is the details of these changes that you're making across all areas. And I want to take a different air, part of Old Farm Lakes, Old Farm Lakes Gardens, which is a combination of single family homes and attached homes. And in this case, their district, you would be taking, because they have some attached, you would be taking their height limit to four stories in that neighborhood. Because it says attached and multi-residential under R three A. According to what I'm looking at in front of me has the two point five marked out and it says four.
Is there a part of Old Farm Lakes, forgive me, that is R three A?
Yes, Old Farm Lakes Gardens.
Gardens is a three A.
And the other, taking it to three, I, I just, those are the kinds of things that I'm uncomfortable with. And as we get further down the road, a year, two, three years from now, this is setting the stage for a lot of other significant transformation that would already been in, be in the code and would provide for. And I am concerned about that when, you know, we, and I, I've asked, I've written in and asked you guys if you knew the neighborhoods that we were talking about. Sapphire Lakes.
Yes.
You know, Harvest Point, North Point. You know, we had someone here from Waterford Estates, Old Farm Lakes, parts of the Grove. There are parts of these neighborhoods I think would completely be caught off guard with these types of changes. And they're going to be, again, it's secondary to your main point. Your main point is something that I would support. But these other changes being applied all the way across all of these districts, that I don't support. Four stories in Old Farm Lakes Gardens seems pretty significant.
Other members, I'm, I'm sorry, Member Montney, are you concluded? Thank you. Other members, Member Strazza?
Yes, I have a question. Right now you say it's two and a half stories. I know that we're talking height, feet, stories, all the different types of measurements. What, how many, how many feet is that? So we have in context of what we're talking about.
Which district are you looking at?
I don't know. So if we're going from two and a half to four.
In R three A?
Yeah.
Okay. So as it is, it's thirty five feet and two and a half stories. That's already three stories from most building code perspectives. So the number of stories has increased by one and a half. Because we don't like to build half buried stories of buildings anymore. It's not good for flood rates, right? But we've only gone up in actual height, less than a full story. From, if we are in R three A for attached and multi-residential, it's from thirty five to forty eight. But it's two and a half to four.
So there was a conversation we had earlier related to between five and seven feet. What was that related to?
That's the increase in height. So again, we had this disparity in the thing in the tables between stories and height of buildings. So the height of the building that we're talking about, the increase is between five and seven feet. Where if we're not paying attention to stories, we're just looking at the height. That, that is what the change is. So we think there's a way to keep both stories and height in the table. So we're not proposing to strike one or the other. We just wanted them to align more practically.
Member Montney?
Do you currently have a proposal on the? Do you currently have a proposal on the table that will be impacted by this change to the number of stories that would be allowed in an R3A area?
Yes.
So, and by virtue of us making this as a text amendment change tonight, tonight, the people who live nearby, who would otherwise be aware of this, would no longer be notified of the opportunity to come and share their views. Is, is that correct?
When, when they don't need a variance and they can, they can meet the requirements of code with their project, they're, they are entitled to build that without going through a public hearing process. That is correct.
So how long has that particular project been waiting for us to vote on this particular change?
Since June. But, but to be fair, this project came up because all of these conversations were happening. We heard this four-story specific request for at least two years now. It started coming out when Lincoln Lofts started to be constructed. Because there's actually a building code trigger at four stories. So there's sort of a financial sweet spot for multiple family.
And your understanding is this idea for this project just arose in June of this year?
I think it was, it came into PRG in May.
I think it came into PRG in May. So there is a one owner. One, we did not do, and we are not proposing a text amendment for one project. That isn't how that works. But there is one right now, that there is a developer that owns land that is R3A, next to and nearly surrounded by B1 land. Except to the west of this property is R2, which he owns. So he wants to buffer his R2 lots by attached townhomes for sale to be platted. And then east of that would be two apartment buildings. One's four-story because there'd be garages on the first floor. The other one, I believe, is three. So he'd be creating his own buffered network. He could have rezoned, I guess, a portion of it to R3B and he would go to six stories. Personally, I think we like the four stories in that particular campus-type environment better. So that was one of those things is to try to find that increment between those. So we did, we did not feel that the height of the building was going up so incrementally to cause something significant to be done. It's that part with stories.
Member Montney?
I, I guess what I'm still not following is how the building height changes and these other things that are included in this relate to the main point of what you were bringing before us, which is the idea for plating. But thank you for answering my questions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Other members? With questions? I'll make a motion to approve. Just a member, a motion on the floor by member Hendricks. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by member Ward?
It was Kern.
I'm sorry. Member Kern. And Madam Clerk, you ready for the vote? There it is.
Right, that item passes. There are two nays to announce. Councilmember Montney, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you very much. Onto the next item then, which is item number D on the regular agenda for this evening. If Deputy City Manager Tyus would go ahead and set that up, please?
Absolutely. So again, obviously, we heard a lot of conversations tonight related to the Opticoast report and over the last several months, which is great. We appreciated it and it has changed, it has amended the way we approach this. So we appreciate the comment, honest, comments, honestly. There are a couple of things, or several things that have, have, we need to do a better job of clarifying and, and some changes we've made related to how we would ask that we go forward with this. One, and I think it's very important, is that we know that there was a lack of comfort amongst some for approving the report and the terminology and what that actually meant. So what is being proposed tonight is not that you adopt it, not that you support it, that you acknowledge receipt of the report. And the reason for that is that we know there's a lot of work that we still have to do before anything from this report goes forward. But we didn't want to do that if the council didn't feel as though it was worth pursuing with some, with some, some boundaries. So you acknowledge receipt of the report if approved tonight. The other thing that is happening is that we're not proposing that all of the things from the report, or any other things for that matter, be approved. What we're asking for is that staff be given direction to specifically target particular areas in our community where this might be most appropriate, where this type of housing might be most appropriate. Where we would go out and look at different areas of the community, we would look at traffic patterns, we would look at crime patterns, which that's not necessarily one of the bigger issues, but it's, we would look at infrastructure and water sewer. There are lots of areas in our community whereby there's not infrastructure. And so this type of housing is not going to be appropriate in that area because we don't have infrastructure available. We're asking to be able to identify areas in the community where this type of housing makes the most sense based on a number of different things. And to come back to you as a council and say, hey, council, we think these one or two or three areas make sense based on these different things. And ask if you are comfortable with those areas. And then if you are, then they would be approved. And if not, then they would be denied. Again, we would be creating what are known as overlay districts, which for those who are not familiar, they are districts with defined boundaries, they're smaller than citywide, obviously. Defined street geographical boundaries that have specific rules in place to allow for a particular initiative. So we would pick an area that is much smaller than citywide, obviously. That is much smaller than some of the subdivisions that, that have come up tonight. And say, we would look at them and see if they work and come back with a proposal, an actual proposal for overlays to see if they work for you as a council. Again, another level of, of oversight going forward. Again, I think someone said tonight, just do more work. There needs to be more work. That's what we're asking for tonight as part of the, the resolution related to Opticoast. And again, I want to clarify something I just said. I don't want to assume, I don't, I don't want it taken that I'm saying that crime is related to a type of housing, because it's not. So I want to make sure that I'm, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that we will look at a number of different standards to determine whether or not we would recommend a particular area for missing middle housing. That's, we're asking for permission to be able to do that tonight. The other thing is that we're looking to narrow that search to two particular areas of our community, which are the regeneration area that's defined in our comp plan and the preservation area, which is defined in our comp plan. With that, Kelly or Alyssa, please speak to more specifics of, of, of what I just said.
All right, great. One, I want to apologize a little bit because as we as planners read the Opticoast report, we took it a lot differently than other people did. We saw that there was a lot of work we still had to do. We never intended to apply, never thought we would apply a missing middle housing against a particular zone. We picked the six zones for them to study to see where in our zoning code, what does it inhibit? Because it is in the areas that all those zones where we actually have missing middle housing now and we haven't seen any more being built. So the R2, the R1C, the RD, those were all areas around our core that we said, we need to know if those zoning, if there's something in the zoning districts in our code that's inhibiting them. That was the most valuable thing to me out of Opticoast. The other is, is the walkable centers. It says, if it's not walkable, it won't be successful. There are only two walkable areas in that report. There is a map, but everyone has been focused on like the six, the potential. It is valuable to see where we have some commercial and that could maybe be. But we have a housing problem now. We were going to be looking at what is walkable now. This works with the regeneration and preservation areas. Can you switch slide? Oh, that is where we currently have missing middle housing, by the way, that's green. Next slide, please. These are the two areas, the regeneration and the preservation areas defined in our comp plan. So it's bigger than where we're currently finding missing middle. But it is absolutely around that walkable area and where we already have it. I cannot tell you that we can do missing middle here. We may not have enough water pressure or water lines. I can tell you, not all streets have water mains in front of the lots. So we have combined sewer in certain areas. There may be somewhere we cannot handle more impervious surface. There is a lot of study that needs to happen anyway. When we asked for you guys to accept the study, for us, that was always giving us a charge to look deeper. I just want to be clear, we never would have done it by zoning code. So tonight, we wanted to be more clear on how we thought that was going to go down. Which is let us study it in those two zones that need some help, where it probably could work. Come back to you with what we think might happen. And then our approach is likely an overlay zoning district. Because that is probably the easiest way because we expect these areas to be rather scattered that could accommodate missing middle. So it's a different approach. I think it's hopefully providing you guys more clarity in where we thought we were going to be going. Happy to answer any questions. And if you want to know specifically about preservation versus regeneration, Alyssa can answer that too.
Thank you. Members? Member Hendricks?
Yeah, I don't really have questions so much as just comments. You know, this report is a report that came to us months ago. And I know that you guys have been trying really hard to continue to inform correctly. I think there's been a lot of misinformation that has spread out there, along with quite a few other issues that we voted on tonight. And I appreciate you guys trying to expand and inform more. But this is something that governmental bodies do. We accept reports that we have paid for of information. And then we decide to come back later on when we act on individual portions within it. There is nothing we are voting on tonight that creates any change. There never was, there never is, but it gave time to build misinformation of what could be. I do not think that, I agree with the neighborhoods. You're right, it's not walkable out there at all. Those are not the areas where these things are going to be built. I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think it makes sense. I don't think that really many people ever really did at this point. But as somebody who represents a majority of what that map was, I can tell you, I walk around and I see lots of different types of housing. I do see rentals where those people do care about the neighborhoods that they live in. And I see, I see lots of mixed-use housing within my areas. And you're right, and I know that was misspoken, Assistant Manager Tyus, and you didn't mean that. But we get that impression a lot of times, that areas that I represent and others, you know, around my area, that suddenly there's more crime and that people don't care about that area. That is not the case. So what we are voting on tonight, regardless of how maybe individuals were misinformed, is a report of information. And we will decide how to move forward with it. I appreciate city staff. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
Since before we met in May, I have requested for clarity about what is included and what is not included. And I've received multiple responses back that say, that's not our approach, that's not the way we do it. That's why I'm here, that's why I feel so strongly about this. Because we can only then go by the documentation that has been provided to us. And the documentation that has been provided to us in the previous resolution was very broad. And it was very specific. And that's where we are and why it is that I've been educating those in, in the neighborhoods that are R2 and previously R1C. And I want to give you one specific example. Previously, R1C was included, but at our last discussion in August, the city manager said, we will remove R1C. But where is that documented? I, I just am trying to connect the dots because we're here in this moment, but we're codifying these things over time. And some of the changes that are related, that are specifically linked to the Opticoast report, the FAR requirements, the building height requirements and other things like that, we are putting in our code for these areas that you are saying are not in scope. I can't connect the dots on that. And you know, if, if that had been written out, and I've shared that in good faith with the city manager repeatedly, if you laid out what you recommend, then I'm happy to vote on that. But what we have again on the agenda is, here's the Opticoast report. And the word has changed from adopt to accept or acknowledge receipt of. But we've lost then three months where progress could have been made if staff had been willing to bring forward their specific recommendations. We haven't seen that.
Member Mosley?
Yeah, I know this has kind of been a heated topic and I want to thank you guys for providing clarity. Because it's been a lot of reading and sometimes we can all misinterpret things. And so appreciate you making it in simple terms tonight. I do want to say, and I challenge all of us, right, to go to our neighborhoods. We've all received a lot of emails. And just encourage people, I know I have, I live in Wittenburg. And so, and I've been getting these communications for weeks. And I've just encouraged, you know, members in my community to go to the public hearings where they can hear and ask questions. And so I just challenge all of us, because I know it's, this is a sensitive topic for all of us. In Wittenburg, where I bought my house four years ago, there was tall trees that went, you know, to Morris Avenue. And I thought, oh, I'm going to have these for quite a while. And they're down. And behind me, there is going to be additional homes, which are under redevelopment right now, townhomes. And I believe there's going to be an apartment dwelling. And so I just go back to how we started this meeting, right, about being welcoming to our community and to new citizens. And the fact that, you know, we, we may have some challenges ahead of us. But I want to allow you guys, encourage you to go ahead and continue to do your job, right? And make sure that we're best informed and we're making the best decisions. And then we can make a vote about that. And the last thing I'll, I'll just go on is the optical, optical report is, you know, it's very in tune. I never came into this thinking that we were going to adopt it 100%, right? That we're going to put in everything and remake our city exactly like that report. And so I think we have to look at it iteratively and say, where are there opportunities for us? Where are there non-negotiables for our city? And then we move forward with that. And so I encourage you guys to keep moving forward and, and inform us as much as possible. Thank you.
Any other members with comments? I'm sorry, Members Strazza?
Yes. Yeah, I want to echo what Mosley has said. We, this is a report, my understanding, it was always a report. I think it got confused. It was a final document that said, we are making changes to zoning, to what we're doing. And I want to make sure we're, that is not what we're doing. That's not what I want. I want it to be, because yes, I am concerned about Old Farm Lakes and all the other locations that people mentioned tonight. Because yes, that is very, it does change things. It makes people concerned. And unfortunately, a lot of times we are told when we build or we live in an area that's like, it's never going to change. Well, unfortunately, that does. And I want to make sure we limit that. I want to make sure we limit and we are very strategic about where we're putting this walkability. When I read that part of it alone, it's like, well, there's a lot of things that have been pushed out of this. So I think I just want to make sure as staff continues to do this studying, that we really look at what is probable, what is possible, and not add in all the other things. I think what happened is we had new people, myself was new in May. We had some new council members that didn't know anything about this report. And then all of a sudden, here it is, and we're trying to make sense of it. So now we've been in this multiple months, starting to understand everything with where things were going with this. And I feel more comfortable with it. But again, there's a long ways to go. As Mr. Mosley was saying, we have a lot to do, a lot of things we need to make sure is right before we would ever vote on making a change that would affect a lot of people's lives, so.
Member Kerns?
Yes, I'd like to second the motion that's on the floor.
Member, hold on, Member Ward, did you have a comment?
Well, I was just going to second the motion, but that's all right.
Good. It's nice to have you in agreement. Great. All right, we're going to go back to the original motion by Member Hendricks and seconded by Member. by member Kerns. Madam Clerk, if you take the vote?
I can do a voice vote if that's helpful to you. Councilmember Ward, how would you like to vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
You'd report the vote, please?
The item passes with two nays to announce. Councilmember Motney, councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Next, moving on, I believe that's the last item for action, and we now have the city managers' report. Managers' report.
Mr. Mayor, we appreciate that. Lance, if you'll put the slides up really quickly. One of the things we wanted to announce tonight is that we have we have created a website where people can get more information on the lead service line replacement program. As you know, we are mandated to remove lead service lines in our community at a certain level by the federal government. We've now created a website where people can go and get information to learn where we are in the process, what's next, et cetera, et cetera, and get more information. And so that's an important tool. We're excited to have that. Next slide, please. We are in the midst of a competition to get 100, what could be $120,000 to help fund concerts at the BCPA. There's a con, there's a contest through the Levitt Foundation where we're asking people to vote. And if you're in the top 50, we've we've made the top 100, I'll say it that way. If you make the top 50, then you get funding for concerts. So we're encouraging people to text BLOOM to the number on the screen. That's 877-409-5525. Again, that's 877-409-5525. And and as of earlier today, we were in third place. Now, we don't, we, all right. Well, we don't want to be third, we want to be first, so. But but so I appreciate that, but we really want to encourage people to continue to vote, and we'll be doing an all-out push to to get more votes. Next slide, please. Pardon our dust. We know, we all know that there's an ongoing project in our downtown to revitalize, re-energize, do all the things related to our downtown. We also know that it's created some issues as it relates to parking. Add to that the fact that we were required, chose to close the Market Street Garage because there were some significant issues there. But we've created a plan whereby there's additional parking available that is hopefully helping to facilitate that. I believe this map is on our website at blueingtonile.gov, but also you can see it there, where the green has free two-hour parking. We've also done leases with other lots in the downtown to allow for visitor parking. And the most important thing of all this is the fact that we want to let people know businesses still open. The businesses in the Plaza area where the construction is happening now, they're all still open, and we've got available parking to help facilitate people coming down. Next slide, please. That is it, Mayor?
Thank you very much. Also, along the lines of the report for the city manager, I wanted to make sure that folks knew that reason our city manager is not with us tonight. Mr. Jurgens is, he has a very unique life and memorable experience that is ongoing, and that will be the honor flight with his father. So a once-in-a-lifetime situation. We certainly all understand that. With that, the mayor's report tonight centers around briefly, there's a number of events that went on throughout the last several days that many of you attended from the council. But one in particular was the naming of a street in memory of Reverend Frank McSwain Sr., which was over on Market and Allen Street, next to Mount Piscata Church, where he was pastor for many, many years. And then yesterday, in member Hendricks' district in the downtown, the Festival of Joy through our Indian community and culture was attended by many, including our chief, who I've never seen have those moves and dance like he did in sweeping yesterday on the streets. Awesome job. With that, it was a great experience of the last several days. Are there members of the council that has any comments or reports that they'd like to share? If not, I'm sorry? Yes, absolutely.
I apologize in the interest of, I just, I think it's worth saying, and I mean this. Councilmember Motney, I know that you were heavily involved in a lot of the conversations over the last several months related to the housing issues. And I'm, I can honestly say that those conversations and the feedback we got informed where we ended up. Where we ended up tonight is different than where we started. And I'm, and I'm, I, I just think it's worth saying that a lot of that is because some of what we heard from some of the conversations you had. And I just, I would have been remiss to not say that.
Thank you. If there's not any other comments, then I'd ask for a motion for adjournment of tonight's meeting.
I'll move adjournment.
Seconded by member Hendricks and seconded by member?
Straz.
Straz. I thought he beat you, okay. All right, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.